Traditional affordable housing unit in that capacity. The developer has met with the community and gained support for just those reasons. They like the limited affordability with the market rate mix. So the board did approve it under those terms, but did want you to be aware that it was riskier due to the market rate nature of the deal.
Any other concerns that the board forwarded about the project?
I would say the only other concern was related to lease up and whether they would be able to lease up. Because our cash flow is primarily dependent on the market rate units, they were concerned about the ability of the developer to lease up. However, the market study indicates that there's a strong market for it, et cetera. And also, it was underwritten by Bonneville Mortgage, which is a strong mortgage lender as well. And so, our underwriting is secondary to both of those, and both of those lend to a strong market.
So I saw a recent report that said we're still holding at 3% vacancy. Is that what you're hearing as well, which is a pretty solid market?
Yes, that's correct.
So Nick, do you have anything to add?
I do not know.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Erin.
And this is less directed at this project, but when we have a project like this, in an area like this, that has a lot of growth happening and is, looks like it's going to continue to have some market rate growth around apartments in this area, how does that study, how do we compensate for the changing nature of the market in an area?
Well, generally, what happens, whenever we get a transaction, it includes a market rate study by Jim Woods or others that sort of contemplate for those factors. And so, when they do their description, they sort of speak to that and estimate what they think is going to happen in that community, and I think that's taken into consideration to the best that we can. Of course, you can't always predict, but we do do our best to understand the changing dynamics. And I think too, an example like this transaction is it's on the forefront of market rate projects, and so you are going to see right now it is a little riskier. Will people live there at those rates, et cetera? But over time, we expect the market to continue to strengthen.
And did Jim Woods do the market analysis on this one?
You know, I would have to go back and double check.
It's all right. It just gives me extra confidence.
Well, he provides a lot of the data that anybody uses.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number four, which is also Housing Trust Fund Loan for Granary Place. Melissa, I'll let you just sort of do the same routine.
Thank you. This is from J.F. Capital for $500,000 for the development of Granary Place, which is a 4% tax credit project, which is leveraging our funds. It's located at 256 West, 700 South, just outside of the RDA redevelopment district. It has a total of 134 units, and 100% of them are affordable at 60% AMI or below. You have a mix of one, two-bedroom, and studio apartments, but this is a very strong project from a financial standpoint, and also is expected to contribute to the livability, walkability of the Granary District and the, you know, targets and strategies of the RDA in that area.
And Nick, anything to add? Any questions or comments? Everybody okay? All right?
I guess one minor thing, so this will be, unfortunately, we included motion sheets in the packet for tonight. It is not on for potential action, so next week it will be on for potential action.
So this, it's scheduled for action next week?
Yes.
That's, okay. Yes, Erin.
Before you go, could we request an updated list of, I suppose, I was going to ask just for projects around Housing Trust Fund, but if we could get kind of a more broader look at current developments happening with the AMI breakouts and even a ratio of units.
Yeah, we've got a pipeline sheet.
I'm sure you have one.
And we'll show you the breakout.
That would be really helpful.
If you could share that with staff so they can distribute to council members, that'd be great. Thanks.
We'll be happy.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number five, I think we have a little setup time we're going to need here. It's the Community Development Block Grant Conversation.
If we want to start without everybody, I have a bunch of proposals I'd like to straw poll.
I think Lisa does too, so we might get right through this. So let me just map out the timeline for us a little bit on this, and I'm going to take a little time for intro, not intro, because we introduced this previously, but just where we are in this process and what we're expecting to do today. I'll remind everybody that we did Hopla Home and ESG, so we're just focusing on CDBG. The way we've scheduled this, we have to approve it next week. And so, we've scheduled most of our time for discussion today. I'll remind you that James requested of council members, if you're going to recommend funding, something you have to identify where you're taking the money, so that's part of the criteria. So we have to agree on both sides as a body. And our hope is to have the bulk of this conversation today, and we've scheduled a little bit of time next week in the briefing, but I'm hoping that if, that might be for just a couple of items where we might need to have some follow-up or some additional information. Our hope is that we get to a pretty solid recommendation for going forward today. So that's our plan, is to do the bulk of the work today. So I'm going to turn the time over to staff to talk about where we are in this process. And I know we're joined by Melissa and Jennifer from HAND, and also Ben from our office. Ben, do you have anything you'd like to introduce as you start this off?
Just a reminder, we're doing the screencast again. I just emailed a link to all the council members, so if you want to see a video stream of the spreadsheet as it is on the screen in the corner and in front of me, just click the link and it should pop up on GoToMeeting so you can jump back.
And you sent an email?
Yes. It's a link and an email, correct.
And I'd just like to welcome Charlie, who has joined us from Council District Six. All right. Melissa.
One other question. We can use a spreadsheet where I've assumed the council's working from the mayor's recommendations, or I have a separate spreadsheet where I've left the council appropriation zero, so you can work from zero and build on up, or work from the mayor's recommendations.
So let me ask council members, there's a couple ways we can approach this. We could go through this line item by line item, which we've done in the past. It takes a little more time. Or we could just start with people who have recommendations for changes. And so, I would suggest at this point that it's probably easiest to work off changes based on the mayor's recommendation, if that's the way we're going to go with changes, and that might be a good starting point for us. And then, if there's not, that way, if we don't need to discuss an item, we don't need to go to, which, do you have a preference, council members?
I would like to work off the mayor's recommendation.
And do you want to go through each line item, or would you rather just do it by suggestions?
I would like to go by suggestions, because it feels like at the end, after we make our pitches and trades, that we end up going through everything and looking at what that boils down to.
Making sure it all sort of tabulates out. Is that okay with, does that work? Either way works for you, Ben?
Yep.
Okay, so, and you're going to track it for us. Is there a number we need to watch?
So if you look at the top row, it's frozen, so that no matter where we go, you'll always see the totals. And just for example, if we were to put, let's say, $700,000, it's going to change into red at the top, so we know we're over, and then it'll tell us how much we're over.
So it will never be over, because if you make a recommendation for funding something, you have to take money away from something, so.
That's the hope.
The other thing I want to remind, please remind us about the services component and the percentage there, and what that dollar amount is, and how we have to manage that.
Sure. So just to...
And you need to pull that microphone really close.
Really close.
Thanks.
So just to remind everyone, the CDBG program's been around for 41 years. We have just over 3.8 million to allocate in this process. Heavily housing, heavily neighborhood improvements, with 15% going to social services. So that's our public services component. It is by far the hardest component to allocate. This year, we received 1.3 million in ask, and there's $481,000 available to allocate in this process.
And that is not flexible.
That is not flexible. You could do less, but you certainly...
Can't do more.
The other cap that we have to keep in mind is the administrative cap. We are limited to 20% of the funding being used for administration.
Okay. Any process questions, council members? Let's jump in, and I'm going to go to Erin Mendenhall first, and then we're going to go to Lisa, because they both mentioned to me that they have some thoughts, and I'm just going to...
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay, now we're only down to four, so let's pass some stuff really fast. I'm going to start with some proposals I have that are all in public services, and I'll give you the numbers as we go, if that will help. Let me get there myself. And I am going to balance my budget proposals here. So I'm going to start with what we're going to, what I'd like to add funding for. The number one addition I'd like to make is $11,000 to the Rape Recovery Center, which is number 23 on your public services list. That would bring us back to last year's funding level. And they have had, the reason this is number one on my list is the Rape Recovery Center has an increase in needs. And thankfully, they are there to serve these needs, but they have an expanded financial onus in order to do so. And part of that is the work that we did as a council in daylighting the conversation around rape kit testing, and that has been an expanding conversation, even as we've seen in the news this week, and hopefully bringing more victims into the process of justice and healing. And so, I would like us to make that request more whole at $11,000. Number two in my list would be number 37 on our public services list, which is the Women and Children in Jeopardy program through the YWCA. Historically, since the 38th funding year, we have given them $34,000, and this $9,500 would bring them up from, and I, actually, sorry, I'm not doing the math in my head. I have a list in front of me. That would also bring us back to last year's funding level. Additionally, number three, I'd like to bring the donated dental, number 29, back to the last year's funding level at $2,000. And then, number four on my list would be assist. Let me back up and just say that the donated dental clinic, we talk about basic services, and, you know, food and clothing is part of that, but when you have an abscess tooth, your ability to do anything, even sleep through a night, is inhibited. Anybody who thinks for five moments about this, five seconds about this, realizes how critical dental health is, and they are serving a really critical need in our community and doing it really well. So I'd like to take that back with just the $2,000 addition. $20,000 for assist, which is our number one in the housing section, would be number four on my list, and that $20,000 addition is still $20,000 less than last year's funding level. And this speaks really to something that Councilmember Adams has been an advocate for, which is allowing people to age in place and stay in their communities, keeping people from becoming homeless and actually having to access more services, which end up costing the system even more. So 20,000, it doesn't quite get us back to historic funding levels, but it does something. Number five, I'd like to add the Legal Aid Society, which is number 18, back on your public services. I'm looking at a weird number there, but it's all going to make sense, I hope, in the other half where I take money away. But $6,189 for legal aid to help victims of domestic violence, which kind of circles in, and you know, I think, in Venn diagrams, but we have the Rape Recovery Center at number one, Women and Children in Jeopardy, and this Legal Aid Society, and the work that they're specifically doing with this project, serving some of the most vulnerable people in our community, and overlapping in some ways, but certainly distinct in their services. Number six, I would like to add $7,500 for Peer Court, which is the CDC IP recommendation, I believe. Is that right, Ben? Would it take it?
It would be slightly more than the four-year funding average.
That's number 17 on our list?
Correct.
So Erin, I'm just trying to catch back up, if you'll forgive me. Where are you grabbing all this money from?
I'm going to do that in just a second.
Awesome.
And I'm going to balance this thing. Don't worry, okay? Don't calm down.
I know this isn't rockin' science, but it's basic arithmetic, so let's, just want to see it add up.
I'm going to, so I'm at, yeah, okay. So we're adding some money. $7,500 for Peer Court. It's slightly more than our four-year average funding level. And then, $7,811 for the Road Home Community Shelter, which is number 24. It's more funding than the mayor requested, less than CDC IP board recommended.
What is, what would the total be there?
That's number 24.
Yeah.
Ben, can you do that math for me?
Just have that marked for an increase as well, that's what I'm asking.
I do too.
That's 7,811.
Additional money.
Yep. That's from the mayor's 38, 689?
Right.
Okay, you ready for the hard part?
Yeah, let's do it.
Ben, what am I at right now in our, yeah, how far in the red?
So in the red, with all of it put together, you would be at...
Forty...
I think it's forty...
Oh, it's more than that. 11, 95, 2,000. 6,189, 75.
Yep, 64,000.
Okay. So we're going to do the, I'm going to do the 20,000 for assist, because that's outside of public services, so that I can swap that. And where I would be taking that from is in our housing section, which assist is also in. So I'm flipping to the housing section, and I would be taking that, I would propose that we take that from number two, which is the CDC of Utah Housing, which would take us back to last year's funding level for them.
What would you do on housing?
On housing, yeah. And this is off my notes, I'm not quite there in the packet yet. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so the recommendation, the request was 90, CDC IP and mayor both recommended the full 90. We've done four years at 70 in the past. So that, again, assist, we would still be 20,000 under what we have historically funded them, but it would be making that critical need more whole and keeping CDC at their historic level.
Of 70.
Yes. And then, to go back to public services, if we go to number, let me flip there myself before I... Number one, Advantage Services. This is the hardest part, and I know we all feel it, but can I just say it again, that there is never enough money, and these are all incredible needs and incredible service providers, and so it's not without some pain to do this part. But that said, number one, Advantage Services, I would propose using the CDC IP board's recommendation and reducing that by $13,500. And then, if we went to number six, the Columbus Foundation, I again propose using the CDC IP board's recommendation of $27,000, which takes us down, would put $10,500 into it, into our pool. And finally, number 26.
$10,000.
Yes, which is the Real Food Rising Program, Salt Lake Community Action Program. It's a new request, and I would propose taking $20,000 from that, although I understand that the 5,000, I'm not sure why I proposed that, except that it just, it covers up what I need to make up for in the deficit.
So you would zero out that request?
Basically, we, yes, we would zero it out, yeah. Oh, sorry, I thought I said 25,000 for the mayor's recommendation. Yeah. So the 20 there, and that makes this proposal balance. And this, the Real Food Rising Program, it feels good, and I wish that, I was proposing that we keep it, but what I am proposing, that we sustain at last year's recommendations and make more whole are issues around housing and keeping people in their homes and supporting victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and to me feel like more critical needs at this point.
Mr. Trump.
That's my proposal.
Yes, Charlie.
So I was going to make some recommendations as well. Actually, Erin covered everything that I was going to do and more, so I just want to concur with what she said, and will support, support that.
That's great. And I really like it too, Erin. I know that Lisa is next, but Lisa, would you be comfortable, I know that Derek isn't here, he's suffering from a migraine, he's at home, won't be joining us, and I know that Ben has got, have you been in contact with Derek?
Yeah, we touched base briefly this morning, and he had two items that he was hoping I could share his preferences for. The first one is the...
Wait, wait, hang on just one second. Lisa, would you be okay if we jump into Derek and then come back to you? Okay.
Erin pretty much covered every single thing. We didn't cheat on the paper or anything when we did our homework.
I, I, yeah, I was going to say...
I didn't even talk to you guys this week.
I know.
I really only have one other thing, but go ahead with Derek.
Okay, we'll go to, we'll do Derek's right now and then go to Lisa.
So the first one for Derek was he was hoping for full funding for the Rape Recovery Center, and with Councilmember Mendenhall's adjustments, they're currently at 35,000 on a $50,000 request, so that'd be another 15,000. And then, he was also hoping for full funding for the Boys and Girls Club, their Poplar Grove Digital Divide, and that is at the top of the Public Services section. It's number four.
Mr. Chair, could I speak to that one? Because thanks to Ben, I had some questions answered about, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling it up. The Poplar Grove, number four, I asked if the Boys and Girls Club had applied for the Google Fiber funding assistance. We know that Google Fiber will be sponsoring Wi-Fi and fiber connectivity from a certain handful of nonprofits, as that can apply. And they replied that they have not yet formally applied to Google Fiber for funding assistance. They're aware that there's community programs available, and specifically, it's called the Community Connections Program. There's a meeting they have scheduled with them to discuss potential partnership opportunities. It seems like a perfect fit for what Google Fiber has told us they want to serve in the community. And so, I was, I think we could consider encouraging that applicant to proceed with those conversations with our support.
Can I agree with that fully? I really want to see the Boys and Girls Club have this access, and if they can do it through Google, great, but I think it should be a priority for us.
Okay, Ben. Moving on to Derek's, number two.
So number two was the Boys and Girls Club, and it would be $11,187 to fulfill their full request, and then it was $15,000 for full funding for the Rape Recovery Center from Councilmember Mendenhall's changes.
No, did he supply with any money takeaway from somewhere else?
He did not. I know he was putting a few scenarios in the spreadsheet, but I haven't yet heard back from him on what he'd recommend.
If he texts you during the meeting, let us know and pop up. Okay, Lisa.
As I said, I feel really comfortable with everything Erin suggested. She thought of the things I cared about and more. One thing that I, well, I care about all of these, we all care about all of these, this is like the hardest thing we do. I would like to see us fund the Family Support Center, number 11, under the Public Services, the Crisis Nurseries. Like to put $10,000 there, and I would take it from one of my other really favorite projects, was the number 13, the Guadalupe Center, take 10 from that, so that we would be funding the Guadalupe Center at the recommended amount of the board and take that 10,000 to the Crisis Nurseries, so that those kids will survive the Crisis Nursery, can be in that, and then be able to be in the Guadalupe program down the road. We've helped fund the Crisis Nurseries for many years, and I want to match what we gave them last year.
So Lisa, where is the crisis?
It is number 11 on the, on the Public Services, and Guadalupe's number 13.
And you would fund that to 10,000?
Yeah, at 10,000.
Okay. And that's the only other change other than that Erin has?
The only other change, but I did have a question on our very first page on city administration. I noticed that all four of those requests involve federal grants, and I wondered if we could possibly consolidate some of that, so that we don't have four different people doing that.
I'll just answer just the brief part I am aware of, which is that this is, this is partial funding for positions that are somewhat involved in the federal grant program. So it's not like each of these four areas does the same thing.
Is hiring any individual person or something? Okay.
So, you know, in some cases, it's 5% of department funding, in other cases, it's a little bit more.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that, and let me just look at my notes and see. On neighborhood improvements and streets, I would like to hear, I'm surprised to see, like, for example, on number two, the deteriorated sidewalk replacement, I would propose moving 117,000 there from the Glendale project, and I'm interested in knowing why it was given full funding when the board didn't give it any on number four. So move, moving some money, they're leaving some money at Glendale, but taking, adding 117,000 to that, so that it gets up to 286,844, so from four to two.
Can I address?
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah.
Thank you so much. So the deteriorate sidewalk replacement program, we know that throughout this city, we have sidewalks that need addressing, and it is a very scalable project. And so, you often see ramps and sidewalks in this process being reduced to whatever number it is that we need to fill our grant requirement. Between the CDC IP board and the mayor recommending funding, we were actually able to find additional funding through some reconciliations. And so, the mayor actually had a slightly larger dollar amount, $250,000 more to allocate. And so, she really was looking at, well, what can we get done? And that was not at all in the realm of possibilities, given the dollar amount that the CDC IP board had to work with.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't that the board didn't recommend it. They fully appreciate the program, there just wasn't enough funding. And then, also, to reduce the Glendale Street reconstruction by $117,000, that is going to impact that project to be able to move forward. So we either need to look at allocating enough to design it or enough to construct it wholly, but to cut their funding by 117,000, I think that would really substantially impact that program.
That's exactly what we need to know, because we don't know what these engineering numbers, we get it and I look at it, and I'm thinking, wow, 437,000 is what the mayor wants, and the board said nothing, and then we hear a lot about deteriorating sidewalks, but I didn't know that it had the kind of flexibility that it has, so I will withdraw that request. Thank you. Thanks for explaining that.
So Andrew, can you, and also staff, administration staff, can you tell us the reasoning behind the CDC IP recommending in neighborhood improvements for streets, item number three, which is Fremont Avenue Reconstruction? The mayor did not recommend that. She recommended item number four, Glendale Street and 800 South Reconstruction.
That's my question, actually.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from Andrew, and then, of course, from the administration to try to figure that out.
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Great, thanks. So when you look at impact, where these streets are located and the houses that touch these projects, the Glendale Street has more houses attached to that physical location, and then they're also providing connectivity to the Jordan River Parkway. So in terms of impact, the mayor felt like the Glendale Street reconstruction project would have a higher impact on the neighborhood, and additionally, there's more people that would benefit in that area, whereas, and keep in mind that there were additional funds available at that point in the process as compared to during the CDC IP process. So the Fremont Avenue Reconstruction, there is less impact in terms of the number of houses that are attached to that physical street. So I think that was kind of the thought process there in that one. Additionally... Additionally, just again focused on, there's more funding available, there's a larger impact with that Glendale Street reconstruction.
Yeah, essentially that's about it.
Any background that you can give us on that? I mean, how about 8 South and Glendale?
I can't talk to the full scale, but maybe you could... Do you have the full scale of that project? What's gonna be included in it?
You know, Jeff Snelling is here. And if it's okay, then I ask him to speak more in depth about those, if that would be nice.
Okay, so specific to 8 South and Glendale, we're looking at sidewalk ADA improvements and putting in concrete streets. And then, as Jennifer mentioned, we'd have greater connectivity to the river. The sidewalks can go up to that area. So we'd create a more complete ADA compatible connection with the trail.
So the sidewalk would connect to the trail directly now or as it doesn't currently?
We're looking at that, yes, to do that.
So there's no definitive yes or no?
It should be definitive, yeah. I would... I haven't looked at that in detail, but I don't see any reason why that wouldn't happen. Let me say that. And then with Fremont, just a heads up, we did a sidewalk project about three years ago in collaboration with Streets to make it more ADA compatible. So there has been some improvements on Fremont that has helped with pedestrian access through there. And maybe that was part of the decision too. I'm not sure.
Okay. So we are confident it will be concrete street and sidewalk accessibility to the Parkway? We're still studying this?
No, it will be concrete street. And I will give back to you if it's not a direct connection to the trail.
Okay.
Erin.
Jeff, I'm glad you're up here. It's an interesting approach and I understand it's one that we should consider to see how many residents any one street reconstruction would impact versus another. And yet there's also this approach of the level of deterioration. And so can you talk to us, besides how many people live on the street, about which street is worse, really, and which street we have more time to consider finding funding for?
Again, with both... With all three of those streets, 8 South, Fremont, and Glendale, they all have a condition rating that is poor. So again, there's very little treatments that you can do to make things better. I mean, there's crack seal, but that's a very temporary fix. So all are in need from a pavement perspective. As far as improvements that could happen with Glendale and 8 South, I think there's some opportunities, maybe looking at connections to the river. If there are drainages that we could do more of a green streets approach, looking at that. And as far as... Again, on Fremont, there's no curb and gutter on the south end. It kind of drains into some swells and things like that. So it would be an improvement for that neighborhood to do that. But with the 8 South and Glendale Streets, I do think that there's more of a direct impact for that entire community because of the connection to the river through 8 South.
And would you... Because of the overlap with trails accessibility, is there any parks collaboration for funding if we have that potential?
We could look at that. We have not looked at that. We did this separately and again, I think it was part of the area-wide plans that we were looking at. I'm not sure. That was discussed.
When we... I really like to see the funding overlap. When we make the policy association that we're gonna choose a project over another project because of this overlapping departmentish... Or access really for the residents, but it comes down to overlapping departments. And that perhaps, you know, reconstruction of this means that we have better access to the trail system or that it also means some extra connections to the trail system. We should also see that funding overlap.
Right. But just to stress that we will work closely with transportation and parks and how those connections are made. So...
And maybe even collaboratively in your budget discussions about that. I would suggest.
It's a pretty short connection though, so I mean, there's the funding aspect of that portion of it.
It's that overlap that's making, you know, if you sit before us and say you should pick this project over this other project that doesn't even have curb and gutter right now. And that's a serious issue for residents when they have flooding in their front yards and in their driveways because we don't have that basic infrastructure there.
Right. And for that particular situation, I don't think that there's a large flooding concern from the localized street drainage. I would say that. I don't think those properties have been negatively impacted from the street. It's just into a grass swelled area right now and there's not enough flow to really cause a problem with that situation.
I hear you're saying, Erin, and I've been on both streets and they're not... I mean, they're not good. They're both in poor condition.
Right.
I agree with the fact that if we can overlap with parks and get funding to augment and use this for... Or at least portion it for other things, I'm fine with that. I think it's crucial, though, that one of them has to get done. If we can do something that'll help especially a massive number of kids over there access that trail, because that's what we're looking at, on 8 South at dead ends and there's no... You can't get to that trail except through the field. It helps that a lot. And so that's why I support it. And it's all residential over on the Glendale side versus Fremont isn't really. And I'm not saying we shouldn't look at Fremont, but I agree with the rationale essentially. So...
I'll take Andrew's lead on that.
I have a question, Jeff. When you say it's in poor condition, does that mean that it excludes options that might be less expensive than complete replacement like overlay? Is overlay an option there? Or... Because I know we're talking about the quality of concrete construction and how much more durable that is. But does that eliminate overlay as an option?
It does not. Again, with this program, we're looking at longevity, lifecycle costs, again, white versus black heat.
So is it fair to say that in CDBG funded projects that maybe longevity would take a little bit of a priority? Because we don't frequently see overlay projects in CDBG recommendations. It's usually reconstruction.
It is.
And is that... Fair to say that's part of that rationale?
Yes. Again, just because of the need and again, just you're not having to provide treatments on an ongoing basis. Once it's in, really our expectation is a 60 to 75-year street.
Okay, thanks.
And if I could piggyback on that a little bit. In CDBG, they see overlay as more of a maintenance item where we can't do maintenance of streets with this...
So it would not actually be eligible for CDBG?
Correct. Correct. You'd have to fund it through CDBG.
Although it would be less expensive, it would have to come out of general fund or some other funding source.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Lisa.
Thank you. Back to me. Under the Public Services, want you to take a look at number 34, the VOA Homeless Youth Support Services. This is a new request. They are assisting 800 young people. And I would like us to give them $20,000. And much as it pains me, I would take it from number 35, the Wasatch Homeless Healthcare, which the board recommended $13,000, the mayor recommended $40,000. So I'd like to take half of that. We're serving similar populations there, but I want to see the homeless shelter for youth really be able to take off and have the help that they need. So that's my only other...
Lisa, let me get this straight. You're going to take $20,000 from item number 35 and place it where?
Right above it, item 34.
Could I speak to why the difference between the mayor and the CDCIP on the 4th Street Clinic?
Uh-huh.
So the Wasatch Homeless Healthcare applied in both CDBG and ESG funding for the exact same application. And the board split that funding. So they provided some funding in CDBG and some in ESG. And then the mayor came back and in looking at the administration of that program, it costs a lot more for them to administer that in ESG. It has a lot more requirements that come along with that funding. And so it makes more sense that they are funded out of CDBG. But that is why there is such the difference in $13,000 and $40,000.
I think the agreement last time was that ESG wouldn't be funded, but it would... We'd look at it in CDG instead. So anything in ESG this time, but CBG is where we're gonna look at it.
This is the one that we said we wouldn't tinker with.
Right, that we flagged. Okay. I just am looking at 138 people being served versus 800 being served, so...
Sure. I think with the VOA, my question also has been the unknown about the state funding. And I know that's an unknown right now, but how is that gonna play into their services they're gonna be providing?
I think it's really hard to speak to that at this moment.
Sure. I'll throw it out there to the universe.
Can I... Mr. Chair? Number 35. If... I know that Derek has done this, but if any of you haven't yet gone on the ride along with the 4th Street Clinic and their van and the outreach that they do, I highly recommend it. And the cost savings that that operation nets for our taxpayers, for us, by getting people medical services, regular medical treatment on a daily basis is uncalculated and, I would venture to guess, astronomical. It is saving ambulance trips to the ER for people on the street, living in camps, at the shelter, on State Street, every single day. That's what they're doing. So it... The number of people is probably different that they're serving, but the savings and the service they do is... We can't even begin to measure what they're saving.
I'm persuaded, but I still want to try to find some money for VOA.
Well, the question, and I don't know if you can speak to why the mayor decided not to fund it at any level, is that talking to some other potential funding source?
So the mayor did fund VOA through ESG.
Yeah.
And so... And the thought process is we are supporting the shelter. And this request is asking for salaries for case management. And so really, we are supporting the agency just in a different manner through a different funding source.
I mean, I agree. I'm biased, obviously, for the homeless providers, but it's a huge need. My hope, I guess, is that if we can't find money here, we need to help find money through the other allocation, the ongoing allocation.
Lisa, one of the conversations we had at the RDA level was that they have a cost that associated with some curb and gutter and street improvements that the city's gonna require them to do. And we might be able to fund that through the RDA, which would free up some additional money. And it's not direct money to their programming, but it's money they wouldn't have to spend. Have we figured out if that's still an opportunity for them? Do you know? We were gonna... I think we were gonna... We left that in. We have to check into it.
Need to follow up on that.
But it's a place where we might be able to support them so that they don't have to expand some of their service funds if we could provide some city support through the RDA for their construction costs.
Okay. That's...
I agree.
I just don't want to forget that. And I remember that it was in ESG, but you know, all these different things are hard to keep straight.
Well, and so... And Kathy Bray and I have had this conversation through their whole project. I'm really impressed that they were able to do the construction of that entire facility without any financial support from the city. So I would love to figure out a way we can support them in their services or in that project that may free up money for services.
Where do we stand on balancing between every proposal that's been done?
So just to clarify, it sounds like the council's not supportive of moving the $20,000 as Councilmember Adams recommended from number 35 and number 34?
And I'm withdrawing the recommendation.
Okay.
And the reason being is it was funded in ESG?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, I just wanted everyone to know, that's why. Ben, come on now.
So we currently stand the $26,187 over in Public Services, and those are Councilmember Kitchens' two recommendations, the Rape Recovery Center and the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
All the other recommendations have been revenue neutral.
With Councilmember Kitchens' recommendations, are we balanced?
Yes.
Okay. And I have a recommendation, if everyone else has done too. Andrew, did you have anything you wanted to look at?
I think you did.
Okay. And I really appreciate council members' cooperation in the CDBG process this year. Last week went smoothly. Erin took the bull by the horns and basically handled everything, I think, that most council members were looking at. I have one, and that is in, since Erin has so classy handled this so well...
Can I wear my tiara for the rest of the day?
We're gonna go into the Public Services portion of this spreadsheet. And we're gonna look at item number 36. Last year, we didn't fund it, and of course, it's because there's never enough funding for this. And as I go back and I look at some of the funding, I'd like to at least fund part of it for the Rose Park Early Childhood After School Program. And I'm looking at item number 32 and also item number 17. The Pure Court in prior years has received $4,000, $4,000, $6,000. Last year, we funded it $10,000. I am proposing that we take $2,600 from number 17, as well as if you look at item number 32, in the past, we funded it $5,000, $5,000, $10,000, taking $6,000 from that and applying the two, the $6,000 and the $2,600, to item number 36 for a total of $8,600. And of course, we don't want to take money from every single proposal, but you know, there's just not enough money to go around. And looking at it, looking at past year's funding and where we were lacking, this is just one area I think that we could look at.
So clarification, Mr. Chair. I believe one of Erin's proposals was to add some money to the Pure Court, number 17. And so I just want to be sure I know where we are standing because... So you recommended a $20,000 funding. Is that correct?
No, no, no.
No, $7,500.
So you have $500 going into it.
To Pure Court, yeah.
Well, but it gets it to the $20,000.
So maybe I missed the first part of Erin's, but I'm looking at item 32.
You're funding it at $7,500.
$7,500.
$7,500. I mean, I'm sorry, yes. That's what I meant.
Number 17, I proposed...
That was part of your package.
$7,500. So James, would you be taking it from...
I would be taking it from 17 to $2,600.
$7,500. So it would be 4-9.
Correct.
So this is not current. So 17 is not... Before Erin's proposal, it's not funded. Because it's not funded under the mayor's proposal, so that would be a zero funding amount.
Right.
And so the $7,500 takes it to $7,500.
All right.
So I'm wondering if you... And you're looking for how much?
You know, 86. But you know, I'm comfortable just taking it from item number 32 and putting it on 36. Just $6,000 from that. Mayor's recommended 16. We take it to 10, which is what it was last year, and put $6,000 towards item number 36. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Ben, can I just say, you're doing a really great job at this and it's really hard.
Thanks.
And you know, I really appreciate the link to come and look at what we were doing there. I actually went and started touching my screen, Ben, to try and maneuver it. It doesn't work.
Yeah, sorry. I'm maintaining that power.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd just like to commend the council because this is probably one of the smoothest CDBG and ESG and HOPA funding processes I can remember, Charlie. It's... This has been great. I would propose that we leave Councilmember Kitchen the opportunity to identify some funding and we could have that discussion at our next week's short scheduled follow-up. But at this point, Mr. Chair, I'm really comfortable moving forward with the changes that we've made. Mr. Chair's gone behind me.
I'm right behind you.
So... As long as he's not talking about me behind me, I'm okay.
And that doesn't need a second, but I agree. And just a reminder, the council is scheduled to adopt next Tuesday as well.
So what I was suggesting, Mr. Chair, is I'm really comfortable moving ahead if you need to do a straw poll, saying I'm good with the recommendations and modifications as we've made them to this point and that we give Councilmember Kitchen an opportunity to identify some... How he's going to fund his programs. That could be our wrap-up for Tuesday.
So we'll make this really easy and it'll be awesome because we're gonna straw poll it, starting with Andrew, if you're comfortable with it. Wait, Erin?
I'm sorry. If number four, Boys and Girls Club, the Digital Divide investment, if they go ahead with these meetings with Google and find that they are a prime applicant and let's say they get identified, I guess part of it is that we don't know exactly when all of that will be accessible. all of that will be accessible, so. I was going to say, if they get that successfully oriented, then with this funding, well, I know that won't happen, but could it be that within the annual funding cycle, they don't end up using this entire?
So, I think, I'm pretty sure we probably couldn't get a commitment, but we might be able to get some information about that process, and perhaps even if they're eligible for that application, and that could be helpful for us, because I do think, I think where I'm thinking you might be going is that money might be available if we wanted to. So, if we could do some follow-up with that before next week, that could be the other item we might flag, is just needing additional information so that we can decide whether we want to leave it in this proposal, or if we, if it feels like there's a high likelihood that they would be eligible and could apply for that funding, we might be able to redirect them to that.
Sure.
Great. Okay, Andrew, we'll go back to the roll call.
I have one more thing I'd like to.
Okay.
With the, one change was the number 31 on public services still?
What was that?
Number 31, the Utah Food Bank. We had spoken a moment ago.
Yeah, what was that under?
It was under.
Public services.
Public services. And we had talked about, oh, actually, yeah, we had talked about doing, taking some from number 17, the pure court. And so, I was looking at allocating at least four over back to the real food, not to the, to the mobile food pantry program. It got cut by. It was 10, yeah, there was 10 from, 10 cut from the CIP recommendation to the mayor's recommendation.
And taking it from where?
From the pure court, but I think we spoke about that going somewhere else earlier. What was it?
Well, is that zero?
Andrew funded it, it was at zero. So, it's currently, as, as was proposed to us, nobody had funded it. Aaron got it funded through the proposal team.
Only at $7,500.
Right.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern, is dropping them in half essentially from what they need for food for the West Side, so.
And I, that was another follow-up question that I got a little answer to. I asked if the, the application would continue an existing program at Backman and Mountainview Elementary, or would it expand existing services? It says that the funds identified would be used to expand services at Horizonte Instruction Center and Lincoln Elementary School, which is in D5, actually.
Yeah.
Which is interesting.
Andrew, Mr. Chair, may I speak for a minute? Andrew, I have the same concern you do about that cut. I feel like that is such a vital thing for Utah Food Bank. The only place I could see that we could maybe at least get it up to 15 is if we were to take number 27, the Salt Lake Community Action Program, and fund that at the, at $20,000 instead of it to $25,000, and take $5,000 so we could at least fund the food bank at 15. I don't in any way think that Head Start program is absolutely vital, but I'm, when I'm looking at the two programs that they have, one is 16,8, the other one's roughly $4,000, we're right around funding that. It doesn't, it hurts in terms of the full-time employees, but what do you think about that as a possibility, Andrew?
It's, I mean, it's always painful, it's a possibility, I'd be open to it, but.
I was going to say, when you look at their.
Does the accountant come up with an idea over here?
When you look at their application, the $20,000 could, according to their application, still be used for the salaries and benefits of their employees. And I, so I feel good about.
Yeah.
Food over technology at this point, that's what it's boiling down to.
Ben, I don't have your spreadsheet up in front of me. Could you tell me where we currently are funding number 32 under Services, Utah Health and Human Rights? What is that current level of funding?
That's $10,000.
That's where you, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I would agree with that idea, of taking the, was it number five?
So, just to summarize, that's taking $5,000 from number 27, the Salt Lake Community Action Programs, early Head Start program, and moving it to number 31, the Utah Food Bank Mobile Pantry Program.
Yes.
And Ben, can you show us number 32 and where we're at there? Guys, if we can, I'd love to go with the mayor's recommendation on that. That is some basic level, the torture and trauma survivors program on number 32.
And Aaron, the only reason why I took it from there is because in past years, they were funded at $5,000, and so, last year was the first year we went to 10, and this year we would be at that same funding level.
I know, I know.
I understand that there's so many, so many programs that we would love to fund at full, full asking, but we just do not have the resources to go around.
So, we make, we make compromises and.
And when we, when we were in DC, we met with Jason Chaffetz's group, and he has a guy, Lisa, do you remember the guy who was over war veterans? He is, that's something that we need, you remember that, Andrew, that would be a great contact for us to use to, to look at other funding for just Salt Lake City with him. He was, he's on top of it, he helps with everything up at the VA.
So, should we?
Can we capture that for a follow-up with him?
Yeah, how do we capture that?
And could you capture that for a follow-up with him?
He's in their Provo office, I believe.
Would that, would that work, though, for what this group does? I mean, this, this group doesn't really do, I mean, I think they do some, but it's not really veteran services.
Right, these are usually refugees or asylees.
Yeah. And that's where I don't know if that would work.
I'm.
I like the idea, and maybe there is something that we can get him to look at with that, but I, but this is something different.
If we're keeping this open for Derek to come back to on Tuesday, I, I might try to make a proposal around refunding that mayor's recommendation on that, but I challenge any of us to do that, and find $6,000 for that. If you can find it right now, I'd love it.
Mr. Chair, one other thing we might just explore there, with the big emphasis that LDS Church is making on helping refugees, I'm wondering if there might be some funding, private funding available for that, because this happens to be, number 32 is something that on Love Utah, Give Utah, it's what I give to, so I feel like I have a personal investment there, but I, I would really, I'd like to try to see what we can do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Charlie.
Can we scroll up to number 12, the First Step House? What number are we at there? Did that change at all?
It's at 33. At number 12.
And how much are we looking for? Five?
Five or six.
What if we, what if we pulled it from there, from First Step?
I propose we take it from, what do you think about the Boys and Girls Club at 20, that's the Digital Divide one, that's talking to Google five or?
Hey, Aaron, I've got one for you. I don't mean to interrupt, but Charlie, how about look at this? Item number 35, which is the Fourth Street Clinic. In past years, they were funded 34, 34, 34, 21. This year, it's been recommended at 40 by the mayor. What if we take five and put it at the number 32?
That's what we said we wouldn't tinker with in ESG last week.
We said we weren't.
I know, but if you look at the past funding, it would still be above what they were receiving.
I would rather do the Digital Divide. I'd rather do technology than basic health care for people on the street.
And, and I actually agree.
You agree?
So.
Councilmembers, are you comfortable with taking five? Is that what you're proposing?
It's whatever you make a proposal. They're funded at $24,175, and they've got it broken out, not by numbers, but there's two different things they plan to fulfill with that money. I think they're a perfect candidate for the.
Digital Divide.
Yeah, for the, the Community, whatever it's called, Community Connections Program.
So, Aaron, since you had led off so well, so brilliantly today.
Ouch, James, you're going to make my head too big.
Everyone direct their emails to Aaron.
I am just making it known. Aaron is recommending a $19,175. And then the $5,000 would go to item number, I think it's 26.
And that restores number 32.
All of it. It's $1,000 short, so you're, you're at $15,000.
I'll support it, but we do need to make sure we follow up with Google on this one.
Right.
I totally agree.
So, I think that would be a second follow-up to capture Ben, is let's follow Boys and Girls Club in connection with Google.
Right.
We can probably get him, talk to Noel or somebody who can give him some more direction on that.
And I don't think I heard everything. It's taking $5,000 from.
Boys and Girls Club.
To number 26.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, number 32.
Number 32.
Mm-hmm. So, it funds it to 15 instead of 10. All right, since Andrew didn't want to make, didn't want to do his roll call, I'm going to start over at Lisa's side. Are there, is there anyone else that would like to make any proposals? And if not, Lisa, are you comfortable until next week?
Yes.
Just one time?
Yes.
Charlie?
I'm a guest, Stan's a guest.
Yes.
Lisa and Andrew, great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. What was that? Oh, did I, Aaron, I meant. Okay, we are going to, let me pull up my agenda, move on.
Mr. Chair, can we just say one more thing about thinking forward for next year?
Next year or next week?
Next year.
Okay.
For planning, as you guys are well aware, as funding continues to decrease, these get harder and harder each year, and we continue to dwindle. As we work with HUD and our federal partners on the national level, they're increasingly pushing for larger awards that align with the consolidated plan. So, this year, we did do a ranking score that showed which groups aligned to the plan, and then, of course, allocated funding that way. So, certainly nothing to do this year, but as we consider going forward, that will be continued discussions as we build up to next year about how we really allocate larger sums of funding that align most closely with our plan.
So, Melissa, one of the strategies that I've seen some organizations do is to set minimum award amounts, and is that something you're considering? So, I appreciate the difficulty in doing this, and I appreciate the need for the nonprofits and how difficult this process is. I would, I think it would be really helpful if we engaged the nonprofits in that conversation, because I think many of them would agree, and coming from my nonprofit perspective, it's probably not worth a $5,000 or $10,000 grant just because of the paperwork that is involved with this federal program. So, but if we could engage them in that conversation, that would be really helpful before we set an arbitrary sort of minimum threshold for a grant amount. Could we have a conversation with some of those providers and just at least give them a heads up and see if they have a comfort level for where that's a break-even for them? That would also be, I think, really helpful information.
Absolutely, it's great feedback. In fact, this year, we'd like to do a lot of training around the consolidated plan. I mean, we did gather extensive input, but now that was three years ago, and there's turnover, et cetera. So, we're going to do a lot of sort of retraining on what's in the consolidated plan, and I think that that would be a great piece to add to it in terms of what would be considered a good set minimum funding.
So, and council members, the other thing I would just sort of put a bug in your brain about thinking about is this, this, these dollar amounts are continuing to decrease, and there's no, there's no hope that they're going to go up anytime soon. And one of the challenges we face is, I see in particular, is in the service provider side, and even though sometimes we can't provide them with a lot of money, it's very significant that they have Salt Lake City support. I don't think it would be, I think it would be an interesting conversation to talk about a specific dollar amount out of our general fund that we might want to consider making available to service providers who are providing some of these similar services that, and it's just, I have nothing in mind, I just think that it might be an opportunity for us to maybe start thinking about shifting some of this service delivery conversation away from CDPG and more to the need for our nonprofit service providers to line up with our city priorities. And so, we might be able, we might want to consider a general fund allocation in that regard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
We are going to move on to item number six, the proposed library budget for forward year 2016 and '17. So, we have Russell Weeks from council staff, Emily Charles, Library Board President, and Debbie Erman, the Acting Library Board Director. And I'm sorry, I don't know these two gentlemen that are joining us.
I will introduce everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the gentleman to the right of the board president is Pete Giacomo, who is the, who is the Finance Committee Chair, and Jace Bunting, who is the Finance Director.
Who's going to be leading this off?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and other council members. We are pleased to be here to present the Salt Lake City Library Fiscal Year 2016, 2017 Budget. Although Russell is already doing it, I'm going to do it again. And next to me is Pete Giacomo. Pete is, is, as Russell said, the Chair of our Finance Board that worked very closely with the library administration to develop this budget before you today. Next to Pete is Debbie Erman, our Acting Director. And with us also is Jace Bunting. Jace has taken a new job, unfortunately, in St. Job, and has sadly left us, but he has made a point to make sure he will see us through this budget process, and we're very pleased and thankful for that. And I'd also really like to recognize that we do have additional library staff in the audience here to support us. If you have questions, we have the main library manager, our branch manager, our HR communications folks here as well, so.
So, one quick question, Mimi, and sorry to interrupt.
Yes, okay.
Could you say that he's going to St. George?
Yes. He's gone.
He's gone?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, you're not even here.
He gave that to us. Before we get, we do get started and delve into the budget, I would like you to know that while we are also, once again, in the midst of hiring a new executive director, the third director since I've been on the board, the library as a whole is incredibly resilient, because our outstanding staff that continues to operate all eight of our branches, and thank you very much for that, we just opened Marmalade, and it's incredible, they continue to operate the library with a continuity of vision set by our mission, our strategic plan, and our board, and our Acting Director. And so, we are looking for a new director that is committed not only to this community, the city, but is grounded in that vision, and I just wanted to give you an update on that. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Pete, who will introduce more of the budget, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mimi, and thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the.
If you could pull your microphone really close.
Okay, really close.
They're not very sensitive like we are, but just pull them close.
How's that? Better? All right. Thank you, members of the council, for letting us have this time to present the budget. As you know, the Board of Directors is a volunteer body that oversees the library on behalf of the community, and so, on behalf of the community, we try to exercise the best due diligence that we can, not only in setting the direction of the budget, but to assure that the library runs in a financially effective and efficient manner, and I'm happy to report to you that I believe that in this year's budget, that is the case. The Library Finance Committee, and then the Board of Directors, set key goals for this year's particular budget, and you see those in your summary that is before you. And those key goals were to provide a 2% pay increase for the staff, to increase the library staff for the purpose of increasing our engagement with the community, to conduct an architectural study and space utilization study for the Chapman, Day Riverside, and Sprague Branch Libraries, to increase the amount of money allocated in the system for collections to a goal of about 15% eventually, to maintain staff-employee insurance benefits at current levels, and to start a three-year process of replacing carpet in the main library. With those goals in mind, the budget was set, and those goals will be addressed within the budget. That satisfied us that the direction was good. We have been over the numbers multiple times with Jace, who is a very diligent fellow, and we are very sorry to lose him to St. George. And we're satisfied that the budget does represent a good, sound use of taxpayers' money in the year ahead. So, we. does represent a good, sound use of taxpayers' money in the year ahead. So we request that you approve the budget, but there is more detail that will come from Debbie. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that part, my part of the presentation, if you have them.
Do you have a question? And how, do you, in your process, look at multiple-year projections for your budget?
Yes.
And if you do so, what, how are we trending? And I know that you're not before us requesting a tax increase this year, but the council has made a commitment several years ago to support a tax increase once all the new libraries were open. So where do you see that aligning with your current budget and future budgets?
Yes. Well, the question, of course, goes back a lot to the building of the two new branches in Glendale and the Marmalade area. And at the time that the bonds were approved for that and the projects went ahead, it was known that there would have to be eventually a tax increase to support those operations, so that operations throughout the system and to citizens at the other branches were essentially held harmless. In other words, that bringing the two new branches on would not cause a reduction in service to the others. Those, the proposed tax increase has been held off for a few years, first because the projects themselves slowed down, and second, because the revenues have come in reasonably well and we've been able to satisfy the budget needs. The time for that is about at the end. And I would say that we are probably looking towards the next fiscal year that we would be asking for an increase, because we are going to be using fund balance this upcoming fiscal year in order to sustain the operation of those branches. Having both of them operating for a full year will help us gauge better what is gonna be needed going forward. But we've delayed it, as you know, for a while, because construction's been slow, revenue has been good. But the time for that delay is about up.
So you're comfortable, I really appreciate the concept of working through a year to see what the reality of those numbers are. So thank you for that sort of deliberate activity. You're comfortable that your cushion and your fund balance is sufficient to support you through that process until you see a tax increase?
Yes, because I think that we will still end up, the fiscal year that we're talking about, the coming fiscal year, I think we will end that year, and Jace would know the number exactly, but I think it will be about fourteen percent of operations will still be in fund balance. Is that about right?
That is, and that's a very conservative number.
Yeah.
And do you have a target, do you have a policy target for that balance, minimum balance?
Well, we're not bound by law quite the way that cities are, but our, our hope is somewhere between about sixteen and twenty percent. And we think, like Jace says, that it is conservative to say fourteen, it may end up at sixteen, but that would then, looking to the next fiscal year, start dropping, because we probably will need somewhere about, and Jace again would know the projections better, but probably about one point five to one point eight million a year additional to run the two branches. That's our guess.
But you'll have much firmer numbers based on a year of full operation.
Correct.
And I know a couple of years ago, we were creeping up on our limits, but our property values have increased sufficiently now that there's plenty of cushion in your tax rate, so that we're not really worried about hitching, hitting our limits, our tax limits, are we?
I think that's right. I think that the tax limit is point zero one, and I think we are...
Point seven-four?
Point seven-four.
So there's, yeah. So that's significantly better than it was three years ago.
Right.
So, okay.
Right.
Great.
So we think that there's adequate cushion there. I don't think we would be using the full space in any case, but we don't, won't know that till we get better numbers.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'll just take this opportunity, I know you've got a little more to say, but just to share with how impressed I am with the operations of the library and Debbie with the Marmalade. So thank, I know you, that was a huge focus. So both of those new branch libraries are incredible. And so I know you give us credit for giving you the money and bonding, but I give you credit for really outshining all expectations with the quality and of those two facilities. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was just going to kind of do a few highlights, but then I wanted to leave time for questions, if any of you had questions about your particular branches that are located in your district neighborhoods. So we talked a little bit about where we are on the ceiling. We're also looking on increasing our staff, on kind of a net increase of about three point two-five. We lost some people. We, one thing we've noticed within Technical Services, which processes all the materials that come into the library, is we, we found ways to kind of become more efficient there. So we've offset some, some staff there and with bringing in new staff to kind of be more outward focused, as we mentioned in our executive letter, that we are trying to implement services that really focus on what the community needs and, and working within the community in various areas, particularly the schools, Head Start, you know, other organizations. Our digital focus, like our digital inclusion focus, is working with our Tech Access Group, is working hard to get into different small organizations that may not have the ability to support training for their staff. So those are some areas that, in which we have, are really proud about the work that we're doing in the community. I don't know whether you have any other questions about future plans? Sorry. Does anybody have any questions about our future plans?
Future plans, tell us.
Okay, well...
Debbie, I have a question that actually, in an earlier conversation, I don't know if you caught it, but we, in our CDBG conversation, we, we have a proposal that is about digital inclusion and, and with Google coming in and Google doing, how are you, are you and how are you coordinating with Google and their programming to do inclusion?
Okay.
And how are you reaching out into underserved populations? Because I know one of the big focuses for the libraries is, is digital access.
Right.
So how are you reaching out to other communities, schools, underserved populations?
Okay. Actually, tomorrow, there'll be an announcement from an organization called N-TEN that works closely with Google Fiber that I'll be able to say a little bit more. But currently, we have our Tech Access Department, which includes our Digital Media Lab and the Technology Center. That group of people also goes out into the community and works in senior centers. They've been down at the Wigan Center. I'm sorry, I don't have a list of all the locations they go to.
How about the Boys and Girls Club?
Well, I'm sure that's something we could consider.
Okay, 'cause that actually was the particular agency that was looking at developing some program. But I appreciate that there's a, a range of opportunities that you're looking at. And, and I guess what I was getting at is that clearly there, we see a need and our nonprofits and our community organizations are identifying that need. So collaboration there is, is really important.
Right. We have some opportunities to really build that over the coming year. And, you know, not only with our staff, but looking at, building a volunteer base that could assist us in having a greater reach in the community. We're excited about it. And so some of the things that are listed in Russell's report to you include, I know this has been a concern over the years, is the Forest South landscaping right outside the library and the library gift shops and, shops and the auditorium. So we have done a study this year, and we have money put in place and capital projects to really look at doing a whole new landscaping plan out there. We're toying with the idea of possibly doing some community gardens, doing some garden boxes, and we hope to get that, most likely it would make more sense to start that late in the summer. And then if you, we want to do some plantings, you know, plant in the fall. So that, that'll be coming up. We've been looking at always our furniture repair and replacement. We, we try to have a three-year plan, and particularly at Main Library, that gets a lot of wear and tear, as well as our branches. We have a plan to be upgrading the, or replacing any furniture there. Waterproofing, which isn't very exciting, but it's important, waterproofing the roof sections at Day Riverside and Sprague Branch. We're doing some repairs and improvements to our heating and cooling. The children's play area, those of you who've been down there recently, we have a place called the Crystal Cave, and we're, it's in need of some help, and so we're planning to redo the Crystal Cave in the coming year. And then, of course, just doing some painting and other maintenance at the locations. As Pete mentioned, we're starting the carpet replacement, a three-year project at Main Library, and we're gonna begin that as quickly as we can in July, oh, one. Just in general, all the branches have been doing really a great job. They're busy. We have a ton of children's programming, teen and adult programming. If you get a chance, look at our website under our calendar of events, and there's lots of really fun activities coming up, and we've got some other interesting things in the pipeline.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I, I just want to tell you, I'm most familiar with Sprague Branch, and it is so well-run. They do such a great job. I really appreciate all that they do and how helpful they are when we have community events there. It's really great. But I'm also really familiar with the Anderson Library, and I appreciate that when brought it to the attention of the powers that be, that there had been an accident where a woman fell down into the stream and was badly, badly injured, had to go right to the ER. I actually spoke with her this morning, and she's still recovering. The, quickly, action was taken, and now there's a chain there that's bright orange, and it, it would, I think, be harder for someone to fall down there. I also wanted to tell you, it's my intent to request that our police police that area a little more frequently, particularly down in the gully, 'cause I know there's a problem with that. But thank you for responding and, and taking action so that we don't have problems like that again. Thanks.
You're welcome. Just a quick little anecdote with both, with one wonderful program that's going on at Anderson Foot Hills, a sensory story time set up for children on the autism spectrum, and that's had a great response, and the parents have really enjoyed it. And then down at Sprague Branch, you guys know with all that growth in that neighborhood that we've had just a real increase in library card sign-ups. And what, what's interesting, though, is not so many bodies are coming into the library, but they're certainly using all of our online products and including our eBooks. So that's kind of, just kind of is a good example of how the community, that new, that type of community is working with libraries in a little bit new way, and we're, we're being responsive to those needs.
So, before we jump over to Aaron, I just want to recognize that Councilman Derek Kitchen is here. Thanks for coming, Derek. I understand that you're under the weather with migraine, and I'll speak really quietly for you.
Thanks. Can you talk to us a little bit about the wall? That last year was an issue, I think, in our budget. Was it last year? The crumbling point on the patio out there? And when I looked through the transmitter and the snapshot of the budget, I didn't see it.
It's a CIP issue, right?
Ah, that's where it was.
We always, we always think that there...
Can't you fix the wall that we own?
I believe they were fixing it. It is repaired.
I wondered what the status was, so that's good enough.
Yeah. They, they worked on it, I think it was last spring. It's my recollection.
Thank you. Sorry, it's not your wheelhouse.
No, that's okay. It's a little confusing.
Emily, could I ask you a little bit about hours of operations and just where you ended up in that process and what, and what your future sort of plans are for looking at hours of operation? And before I forget, how are the bees? I gotta know how the bees are. For my neighbors who are all beekeepers, I think it's still cool.
I love the bees. I watch them. I don't know a lot about them, if you want, if you want to know about how it's all operating.
I love that last year was kind of a hard year for bees, so.
I can, I can help you out there.
Okay.
We did take third place with our honey submission.
Third place.
Oh, that's right. To the state fair.
Oh, that's great.
We finally placed, which was not finally, but it was great.
Sweetness at the bottom of the hive. Yeah. Sweetness at the bottom of the hive.
I am amazed at how many people mention that with their kids and even adults who say they go up to the library to look at, watch the bees.
It's incredible. It really is awesome.
Hours.
So, our hours of operation, we, the board has asked that the administration look at all our hours of operations at all our branches to make sure that we are operating in a way that best serves the community that uses that particular branch the most. Our goal is, in today's world, you know, we can have different times of operations in varying places. We don't need to be a cookie cutter type approach to that. And so we did do that at the Chapman Library. It was our first one. We did it. We surveyed our patrons and adjusted our hours accordingly. And it was budget neutral when we did that. Of course, we always hope that that will be the case as we move forward. But I'd like Debbie to maybe address a little bit more about the specifics of where we are exactly in the process with the staff.
We did do some surveys with the public, and my recollection is that we have received all of that information and it's being analyzed right now. When the board made the determination based on the projected cost for the 24/7, and we decided not to go in that direction, that, that it made us think about, are there other ways that we can find to serve the community? So we haven't done any kind of a survey for the Main Library, but that'll be on our agenda for next year.
Do you anticipate that if you had something that wasn't like, fortunately, budget neutral, that you might be able to incorporate that into a budget for a tax increase proposal? Because I, I would personally be willing to look at that. If, for example, we wanted to extend hours at the Main Library to later or something like that, even if it had a budgetary impact, if we could figure out how to work that in. If you, if, if you're willing to make a case for that, I, I think...
Right. I, I think that in all of our conversations, that we are willing to make a case for that. Interestingly, when we did adjust hours at Chapman Branch Library, oh, a little over, over a year ago, that was budget neutral, because all we did was shift the hours of operation to what the community needed. It didn't, didn't demand any increased hours. And I think some of the feedback that we're having on some of the locations, that could be the case. But I'll be honest with you, just with, with Marmalade, it'll be interesting to have a year's worth of data to determine if we need to go to Sunday hours there. And then, again, there, people are open and interested in having expanded hours, like particularly on weekends at Main Library.
And since you brought up Marmalade, I, I only suggest this because you have, you specifically sought out a vendor for a space in the Marmalade, which is, happens to be a coffee shop, but the library hours and the vendor's need for hours might not correspond. So trying to capture some of that audience that a vendor might bring to a library is really intriguing to me, that, that may expand the access needs, in particular, in the mornings for, for patrons who might come for both functions or things.
Right, right. I think when we have walk-up, we've been talking about letting them open up a little earlier, 'cause he can get into the building, so that's an opportunity for him to take advantage of when the warmer weather hits, so.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the, the way you went through the Chapman Library hours survey. It worked, I think it works well, personally, in my experience. And making it budget neutral didn't hurt anything, but the Main Library may be a different, different animal. My question is along the lines of the space utilization studies you're looking at. What is your objective, I guess? What do you hope to get from these studies and moving forward?
Well, you know, since now we, we feel like we've stopped like our budget, new, new building progress, because we're, we're at a good place. We've got a couple, we identified three of the locations that we felt needed some work. Chapman's coming up on their hundred year anniversary in 2018. It's a Carnegie building. You know, with, with the opening of Glendale, it impacted somewhat. Some of their populations can go back and forth a little bit. So how, so we want to look at, like, what does that library need to be for the people in that community? Same with Sprague and same with Day Riverside. Day Riverside's coming, this year's their 20-year anniversary, and Sprague will be coming up on 100 years in 2028. But with all the growth that's happening in that community, it's a, it's a beautiful Tudor building, but how could we maybe maximize the, the space in there? And we feel like we need to bring in someone who's more of an expert on architectural space planning to help us figure out how we would change up some of the interior spaces of those locations. And then, again, coming up for the 2017-18 budget year, we might be looking, you know, another piece to add into what would be part of that tax increase.
It's really an effort to make sure that all of our branches are functioning in a way that serves our communities.
Right.
That, that the facilities, as they were planned and developed in the past, may not necessarily be exactly, doesn't mean altering all the structure and that kind of thing. It's just make sure that what we are doing there and how we are, the flow of how we're doing what we're doing is doing in the most optimal way.
So the, the intention is to have that information in hand before the discussion about needs next year for money, right?
Correct.
So we're planning head-planning.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. We appreciate you coming in. Just on a side note, the Day Riverside Library bathrooms are in some serious problems.
We, we had that actually, something we were looking at this year, but again, because we want to do that space utilization study, we, and, you know, just plans that we'd rather kind of look at it as a whole space than kind of like one-off. But yes, we're in agreement. We know that that's something we want to...
And Aaron does a great job. Not this Aaron. Not this Erin, but Erin Morris does a great job as the branch manager.
She does.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's a lot to be said.
Yeah.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have a little handouts. One is our reading log, my first, it's for children, actually. It's the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Log and we're part of this national program where children for early literacy try to read 1,000 books before kindergarten. And then an example of some of what our 3D printers can do in our creative lab and in our two locations. So we'll pass those out.
Thank you very much. And then council members, as these are being handed out, we are going to take a break until 3 o'clock, at which time we'll come back and move on to item number seven, our economic development fact-finding session. Great. Here to discuss economic development from a Local First perspective.
Yes. So to start out with, Local First Utah's a nonprofit organization and we work to educate the public, government and business owners about the value and vitality of locally-owned businesses to our economies and our communities. We are a statewide organization. We are headquartered here in Salt Lake City, specifically in the Central Ninth Neighborhood. And as a result of that, Salt Lake City is really the heart and soul of a lot of our work. It's the area where we first were able to develop partnerships like we have with Salt Lake City itself, who's one of our cornerstone sponsors. And a lot of the work that we do on a statewide level is mirrored from the work that we have accomplished in Salt Lake City. Primarily, our work is educational in nature. So what that means, you have there, one of our 10 Reasons for Buying Locally is, this is really the heartbeat of our educational campaign. We have our 10 Reasons that both indicate the economic and the social reasons for buying locally. And then on the reverse side of that, there is an expansion of that economic argument, that for every $100 spent in a locally-owned retailer, more than four times more of that money stays here in Utah's economy. And you'll see there that it recirculates in the form of profit and wages, local procurement, and even charitable giving. And that's how those independent businesses really form the backbone of our economies and our communities in the way that they function with that revenue recirculation. So I am just going to go through the questions that I was specifically offered. I have a variety of answers on each one. I will say honestly, on some of these, I have a lot to say and on others, I have less personal expertise. Really, the first question, how can the city facilitate business growth? I'll be honest, that's an area where I myself have less personal expertise. I'm not a policy expert. I would imagine some of the other folks who you have presenting later today will be able to offer some of those policy initiatives. But I think from my perspective, one of the ways that the city and the council itself can help facilitate that business growth is really by being a leader in the business culture and the kind of business culture we want to create in our community. One that is interconnected and diverse and provides a variety of opportunities to people who want to do business here. And I know that you all are seeking to create an economic development plan, but I would say one thing to consider, even beyond an economic development plan, is an economic development vision. One of my favorite quotes says that without vision, the people perish. And I think if we have a strong vision of the kind of business community that we want to have here in Salt Lake City, it will help to inspire those independent businesses that really are so important to our economy. Moving onward a little bit to some areas that I do have a little more expertise in, some hard numbers and some hard data, particularly when you asked, what are some of the challenges that independent businesses face? So what I have here that I believe Lindsay passed out to you guys was, this is data from a group called the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. Each year, they survey independent businesses from across the nation, usually about 35,000 businesses. For the last two years, as part of that survey, they've been able to break down, for individual business alliances like Local First Utah, they've been able to break down the survey results and respondents from Utah-based businesses. So what I have here is two years, 2014 and 2015's results, which represent an average of 73 businesses that employ 919 people. The median number of employees in each of these responding businesses is three, which means they actually rank as micro-businesses, which is even something different than small businesses. And the average age of each of these businesses is 11 years, which I think is also an important thing to consider, that these are still very, very small businesses, but they're established businesses. So in 2014 and 2015, you can compare there, the ranking of very significant and extremely significant challenges. In 2014, and this makes sense historically, those businesses ranked health insurance benefits as being too costly is the number one challenge to their business. But in 2015, they indicated that competition from internet retailers was the number one challenge to their business. And that's actually an interesting flip-flop. If you continue down the line there, looking at 2014's challenges and numbers, competition from large internet companies was ranked as number six only a year ago. And health insurance benefits has dropped to number seven in 2015. The other major challengers have stayed the same. Big competitors receive better pricing and terms. Those small businesses can't afford to market their businesses well. And their customer base is struggling financially. A handful of other challenges that those businesses face include difficulty finding qualified employees and the business district around them is in decline, or the overall customer traffic around their community is down. And then finally, the last challenge there is difficulty obtaining loans or financing. And so with those in mind, you know, how can Salt Lake City better support small employers? I think there, I think some of these challenges are inherent to doing business. There are some things that will always be particular challenges to independent businesses that other larger businesses don't face, such as the cost of marketing. But I think there are other, and those things can't be fixed necessarily by policy. But there are other things that the city can take steps towards that can certainly help. I believe one of the ways that Salt Lake City can better support small employers is by adopting a local procurement and purchasing policy. I think this speaks loudly, again, to the culture and the vision that Salt Lake City wants to cast for our business community. Our public call to action is, we ask people to shift 10% of their spending towards locally-owned businesses. Because when the average household, if every household in Utah shifted 10% of their spending towards locally-owned businesses, $1.3 billion would stay in the state of Utah in our economy. And so our call to action for cities would be to adopt policies that allow them to shift 10% of their spending towards locally-owned businesses. I think it would be a remarkable way to show your support for those independent businesses and it would be a way to really, again, the way we encourage citizens is to vote with your dollars and really show that you do support those independent businesses. Now, there are a lot of varieties and variations in procurement and purchasing policies. I believe the state of Utah has one in effect. I don't know if Salt Lake City has one in effect or how well it is used. And again, just because those policies are in place doesn't necessarily mean it solves that problem. Again, this deals largely with the culture within the institution and how the institution chooses to lead. Other ways that I think that the city can support small employers, one initiative that we're currently working on, that we are partnering with the Economic Development Department on, is our Buy Your Building Initiative. In this initiative, we are working with the loan fund here out of the city, as well as some other financiers across the state, to create a way for independent businesses to buy their buildings where they do business if they so desire. And what this means is, just like homeownership helps stabilize a neighborhood, when a business owns their building, it helps stabilize that neighborhood. A great example that I unfortunately, I did not live in Salt Lake City long enough ago to actually see with my own eyes, but I've been told often about, is the neighborhood of 15th and 15th. I have a hard time imagining that 40 or 50 years ago, 15th and 15th was a blighted neighborhood, considering what it is today. But the result of, what we've seen in that neighborhood is the result of those business owners 30, 20, 40 years ago, being able to purchase those buildings and make a permanent stake in that community. And how that has changed that community into now one of the best neighborhoods in the entire city, possibly the entire state. And I think this is important both for established businesses and new businesses. It provides businesses with an opportunity to really stake their flag in the ground, in the place where they do their business, instead of shifting from one place to another. Finally, I think another, I mean, I have other ideas, but just the top three here. I think that it would be valuable for the city council and the mayor's office to work with the state government to create legislation that will close online sales tax loopholes. As you can see, that the number one challenge before independent businesses in 2015 was competition from online sales. Another piece of information that that survey showed us, the 2015 survey showed us that, historically speaking, the way that survey grouped businesses, so the Institute for Local Self-Reliance has done this survey for eight years that I know of. And they grouped businesses into independent, major retailers, so Gap, Old Navy, those large, large big-box stores, and online retailers. For seven years in a row, it always went in this order, the way that consumers were spending their money. Excuse me, for six years in a row, it always went in this order. The place where consumers were spending their money first was the big-box stores. Then it was independent stores, by a long stretch, then it was online retailers. Two years ago, we saw that shift from, it was big-box stores, online retailers, independent businesses. This year, interestingly, the shift became online retailers. That was the number one place, and I believe this was tracking holiday spending. That was the number one place that people bought during the holidays, was they bought online. Then they bought at independent retailers, then they bought at big-box stores. So even just in that one-to-two-year, that one-to-two-year period of time, there's been a big shift both locally and nationally in how people are spending their money. With more money being spent online, Local First campaigns like ours, I believe, are being very impactful because you see that those independent businesses are far better than those big-box retailers. But both big-box retailers and independent businesses are losing out to online retailers. And that might be the one area where you will find independent businesses and big-box stores working together in order to close those sales tax loopholes, because they both lose out that business. And either way, the cities where those businesses are located lose that sales tax and, interestingly, a pretty significant property tax when those businesses eventually have to close. Okay, so then the next question that you all wanted us to explore was, how can we better support local business nodes? I would have to say, we could stop calling them nodes. That might be one way to help support them. In relationship to neighborhood business districts, Local First Utah has worked the most closely with the city. Over the six years that I have been a part of, Local First Utah, we have conducted conferences, we have conducted seminars, we have done branding initiatives, we have done a lot of work in relationship to the Neighborhood Business District Program. And I'm not altogether sure if the Neighborhood Business District Grant Program is still in effect. I know for a period of time, there was a grant program in which a business district could form a 501(c) 501(c)(6), 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. They were required to form a nonprofit organization. Then, of course, there were various bylaws for their nonprofit organization. They had to meet twice a year, do a handful of different things in order to show that they're actually a nonprofit organization. And then the city was able to donate up to $2,000 in the form of a matching grant. So those neighborhood business districts also had to raise that $2,000 to match that grant. And then that funding was available for those districts to do things like branding initiatives, even things as simple as the hardware that's required to hang identity flags and things from light poles and things along those lines. I know for certain that 9th and 9th took advantage of that grant program. I believe 21st and 21st took advantage of that grant program and I believe 15th and 15th took advantage of that grant program. I believe Broadway applied at one point in time. I'm not sure if they clearly took advantage of it. So at least the nature of that program, in my experience with it and its past iterations, I think it is very well-intended, but I think it also resulted in a lot of stops and starts in neighborhood identity development. Because ultimately, those business owners in those communities, they're running their businesses. They struggle to be able to also run this other community group, even though it is for the best, the best outcome of their own business and their business community. And then I've also heard a lot of stories of internal strife in those organizations, which I think is natural when you get a bunch of strongly spirited business owners together and ask them to work together in that department. So as far as I can tell as well, since that business, since that district grant program has faded away, I could be wrong here, please correct me if I am, there's been almost no engagement from emerging business districts. And I think one thing that we see, so we have our identifiable districts, the places that we know we can call off by name. But there's also some of these, I would almost call them spillover districts. For example, if you walk or cycle 11th East from, you know, from Sugar House, if you take 11th East to 900 South, you hit 9th and 9th. And then you take 9th over to Central 9th. What use, there's almost no end to the businesses that are popping up along those two corridors, particularly between 9th and 9th and Central 9th. And that growth has happened in the last 18 months, two years. And then along 11th, there always was a lot of spillover from the Sugar House neighborhood, but that spillover is extending, you know, there used to be a little spillover around the post office, kind of passed up to 17th and then mostly homes until you got to Liberty Heights. But now, even with Liberty Heights, you see Hubbard Spoke and you see the new development there. And that business growth is continuing almost nonstop up to the intersection of 9th and 11th. And I think that is really healthy growth because it's natural, it's by the need of businesses. It's not a, you know, it's not a pre-formed, insert business here sort of growth that we have. And in some of those spillover districts, I think it'd be really important for us to be able to support those independent businesses and help them to create their own district identity and find out where they fit in the mold. And I will be perfectly honest here, if funding doesn't, if funding does still exist for a Neighborhood Business District Grant Program or program of some kind, I believe that funding should be incorporated into the contract that Local First Utah has with the city for local business development services. I believe that a third-party organization and a nonprofit group can help best bridge that gap between the interests of business owners and the interests of the city. And we have been able to do that in our Central Ninth Neighborhood. We've served as one of the leaders of our Central Ninth Neighborhood in the creation of our branding programs there, our community programs, our open houses, our, a variety of things. And we can speak to that later if you have any specific questions on that. Finally, the last question. What economic development work has your organization undertaken in recent years and what is your plan for this year? Since 2006, Local First Utah has been the leader of the bi-local movement in Utah. We are one of the first independent business alliances in the nation. We continue as one of the largest. And frankly, I don't say this to boast, but I believe that the very reason that we are here discussing small businesses and local business nodes is the result of the years of work that Local First Utah has conducted, that these independent businesses are now a vital part of the city's economic business plan. Or, yeah. But our work is not in recruitment or incentives or in policy creation. Our work is quite simply in education, which may not initially seem as if it has much to do with economic development. But no matter what kind of buildings we build or streets we pave, walkable business districts, mixed-use housing, anything along those lines, if the average, everyday Salt Lake City citizen does not see the value of walking outside their home and spending their money with the independent businesses in their communities, then all of our work is for naught. And so we work to educate the public, as well as business owners and the government. And that education takes on a variety of forms and a variety of programming. We conduct two major educational campaigns annually, one of which is Independence Week, which runs from July 1st through July 7th. And the second is Shift Your Spending Week, which launches each year on Black Friday. Those two campaigns are, they're statewide campaigns, but a significant amount of our work takes place here in Salt Lake City. The core of Independence Week is that we ask elected officials to sign proclamations recognizing... recognizing that week as an actual, a week-long celebration in the city, and we provide specialized branding and marketing materials to businesses that choose to enroll in that campaign. And Shift Your Spending Week is our holiday campaign. It launches on Black Friday, and as I mentioned previously, our call to action there is, this one is much more of a publicly focused campaign, and it encourages people to shift 10% of their holiday shopping towards locally-owned businesses, and then hopefully carry over that habit into the new year. Beyond those educational campaigns and beyond our consistent use of our Ten Reasons for Buying Locally, in Salt Lake City specifically, like I mentioned, we're also working to develop the Buy Your Building Initiative, and we're considering with our Placemakers Maps Initiative. And I am sorry, I do not have any of those maps available for you. That was the last piece that I forgot as I was leaving my office a little bit earlier than I anticipated. But those maps feature, they're a physical map, and they feature photographs of the business owners that are in the communities. In all of our marketing materials and educational materials, you'll see even on our Ten Reasons campaign, we work very hard to ensure that the people who are featured in our campaigns really are the business owners and the people who are part of the community. We don't use stock photos in anything that we produce, because there are more than enough fantastic stories to tell. And so with those Placemakers Maps, businesses have the option of choosing how they want to be listed on the map. We do a nice portrait-style photo of the business owner on one side that has a little bit of information about the business, and then on the other side is a physical map of the neighborhood. So we do have one of those published for the Ninth and Ninth neighborhood. We have one published for the Broadway District, and this year, we're working on one for Fifteenth and Fifteenth. And that is everything I have for you, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council members, questions? Let's work our way down this way. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Love Local First, it's a great organization, and the handout you gave us is outstanding to remind people of those dollar amounts. If you don't want us to call you business nodes, what would be a good title?
That's a great question. I think, you know, I think there is-
And you've got to speak into the mic.
I think there is both, you know, sort of the internal language for, you know, planners and government work and things along those lines, and in that situation, I think nodes is fine. But I think, other than that, I don't think there needs to be a language that the public has to use, because if it's organic and if it's natural, the public won't be thinking, "I am going to the Central Ninth Neighborhood Business District." They'll just be thinking, "I'm going to go meet my friends at Central Ninth." So I think really, the work there needs to be in the identification and the branding of those business districts, how they choose to be branded, which is representative of the businesses and residents in those communities.
I kind of like that we have Ninth, and Ninth, and Fifteenth, and Fifteenth, and we're working on Twenty-First and Twenty-First.
Yeah.
So that, to me, seems like it's nice. But I know planner speak is, these are nodes, and I don't have a problem with it's a business district either.
Yeah.
But we want to call it what works well, but I agree with, it comes from the ground up. Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
I think this data is fantastic. And would you say that this is current, that it looks like?
Yes. Well, it's our most current study, which was produced in 2013, and, 2012 and 2013. So it incorporates two studies. We had, in 2012, we conducted the Salt Lake City Economic Study, which we received our initial numbers from, and that one incorporates both Wayne County and Ogden, and that's work that we did in 2013. And so with the incorporation of Ogden as a mid-sized city and Wayne County as a rural community is where we developed that four-times number, which is actually higher than any other survey or study that had ever been conducted about local recirculation.
Great.
But yeah, I mean, it's a few years old, but I don't think there's any reason to believe the numbers have changed that substantially, either positively or negatively.
And to Lisa's point about neighborhood identities and local business district identity, I'm really interested in your thought about linking this grant program to our annual funding to Local First. Can you tell me what, how you imagine you might be able to support business districts in organizing and putting that money to good use and keeping it going for the long run?
Certainly. I will speak to our experience in Central Ninth, and hopefully, our goal would be to duplicate that experience in other communities. So when we moved into the Central Ninth neighborhood, it was the result of a conversation in a coffee shop that led us there, but Blue Copper Coffee, who at that time was No Brow Coffee, and Atlas Architects had moved from their location on Broadway, and they had moved down there as urban pioneers, as we like to call them. They had taken advantage of the, I believe it was the very first RFP for that neighborhood. They had taken advantage of that, and they moved down there, and our previous director, Nancy Moore, was a regular at No Brow, and she was talking with the gentleman behind the counter one day, and Court Utley from the RDA was in there, and the question was, "Local First Utah needs a new office. What could be an option for us?" And so Court said, "Hey, we have this big green warehouse, and we would love to have somebody in that building to help activate the community." So we moved in, and we worked to activate the community. And in that timeframe, we have partnered with the RDA and the other businesses in the neighborhood to develop the Central Ninth brand, which is, I should have brought something that demonstrated that as well. But that brand and that logo identity was the result of about at least a three-month, possibly even six-month process, where we worked with a specific designer, we engaged in collaboration from community members, neighbors and residents, other business owners. We had open houses to allow people to come and both talk about sort of their personal identity with the neighborhood, talk about where they wanted their neighborhood to go. And uniquely with Central Ninth, we were building something from the ground up. But we did have residents there who loved their neighborhood and wanted the rest of the city to see the value of their neighborhood. So we worked to design a brand with a significant amount of neighborhood and community interaction. Then we worked to develop our, well, to put that brand into action. And so we used the banners along the light posts, and even, there's still one remaining on the south side of the Local First warehouse that clearly identifies the neighborhood as Central Ninth. We also worked to put in the concrete planters that are branded and identified. Since that time, we have hosted additional open houses, we hosted a community block party, bringing in a lot of different nonprofits that work in the community, and, of course, the Central Ninth market is, you know, really, at this point in time, sort of the cornerstone of what the rest of that community is going to become. And so Local First Utah will be moving into the Central Ninth market, which will be all locally occupied, and I believe from there, we're only going to see the profile of that neighborhood continue. So in Central Ninth, the way that we have been able to build that neighborhood identity, it's unique because we're physically located there. In other communities, that certainly wouldn't be the case. But a lot of times, we can operate as a nonpartisan third-party who can hear the perspective of the neighbors, who can hear the perspective of the business owners, who is somebody that people can both give the positive, their positive feedback to, and their negative feedback to, without it necessarily becoming a, "Well, if only the city would do this," or "If only those neighbors would, you know, do this." We can work as that liaison back and forth. So I believe that we would want to identify an individual within our staff who really is gifted in that way, and do a lot of grassroots community development work in those other neighborhoods.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all of this information. I think my comments are mostly directed at Allison and my peers on the, actually, no, I have one for you, and I'm looking in your questionnaire here, and don't see anything about the, kind of the square footage needs of incubating businesses and established local businesses as we look at buildings that we, through our different loan programs, both in the RDA and otherwise, or ways that we can support based on the buildings themselves. And has Local First looked into what that square footage sweet spot is for affordability of local business?
Sure. I can only speak anecdotally towards that. We don't have any specific data towards that, and the best that I can speak to is our experience incubating three businesses in our Local First warehouse. And so for them, they were each small manufacturers, which, so because our warehouse was large, and we only occupied the front office space, and it was helpful for us to have that secondary rent, we were able to include three businesses. The largest space we had in there was a 500-square-foot space, and the smallest was a, actually, I take that back, because one business expanded to about a 750-square-foot space, we had a 500-square-foot space, and a 250-square-foot space.
I would encourage, if it's possible, in your 2016 survey, if that hasn't happened yet, that you gather some information about what their current square, what their footprint is, or, and then the different business types. That kind of information could be really helpful to us-
Yeah.
-when we look at, particularly as an RDA, as we're setting policy around what we want in neighborhoods and in areas, and we try to create a policy that trickles down into actually producing something.
Right.
From my understanding, a lot of that has to do with square footage. So Allison, could I ask that we look into the, I don't know if it was your first recommendation, but the one of looking into a local procurement policy? And I'm thinking that it, instead of it being strictly financially, that it's 10% or some decided amount of the budget, but that it be also well-distributed, so that we don't just fulfill the whole local procurement through, I don't know, saying that all of our food purchasing is going to come locally, but that it be diverse throughout the budget? And I wonder if my peers are interested in that also? I think that's all I have right now.
Ms. Van?
I really appreciate your survey information. I have a couple of questions, because it sort of shakes a little bit of the perception, I think, that I've had, and maybe some of the discussion we've had around, in particular, your Ninth-rated item, the difficulty in obtaining loans. And we have a lot of conversations at the city level about how critical that is, but it shows up pretty low in your survey information. And so can you just talk to that a little bit? I'm just trying to get a feel for that. Is that because the people don't have the need, or is it because they just don't comprehend the possibility, or they may not have the capacity to imagine that that's a possibility? I'm just trying to get my head around what that looks like in the community.
My best answer to that relates to who is answering these questions. This is a relatively small sample size. It's an average of 73 businesses over two years, which I believe the 2014 survey, and these are specifically Utah businesses, I believe in 2014, there were 93 respondents, and I believe in 2015, there were 53 respondents. There's a shorter window of time for businesses to respond in 2015. And I think the other piece of that puzzle is the average age of each of the business, is that most of these businesses that are responding to this survey, for whatever reason, are pretty well-established businesses.
So, I mean, I imagine it might be impossible if they already owned their facilities. So you didn't get into the specific sort of split out of who owns their property, who doesn't own their property?
No, no, yeah.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. And so I guess, not related to the survey, but anecdotally, what is your experience? Is that sort of the barrier that we perceive it might be in communities? And we see it primarily around conversations of businesses feeling like they're forced to relocate. Sugar House is a good example, where a lot of investment went to, Sugar House property values went up, built properties were demolished, and there's this sense that they need to relocate, and they don't have a lot of options for relocation. So I don't know how we capture that information. So what is your sense of that reality?
I think that there's, well, let me say two things. I think in some degree, I think that is true, and I think it's not just true in Salt Lake City, that there is this boom and bust cycle. I could definitely look into further research on that and provide that to you if you would like, so that we don't have to speak anecdotally, but I believe that there is-
Yeah, I would like. That would be really helpful, because I think one of the challenges we face is this cycle, especially of new and new startups, and this need, and perhaps in some cases, a desire to be a little bit on the fringe of traditional neighborhoods or traditional areas. We see this in art as well, that someplace like a warehouse district becomes a really interesting place to try to get a foothold, but I'd be really interested in what sort of critical mass needs to come together in order for that to happen. And then at some point, they cross the threshold where it's popular, and you start, as soon as Old Navy moves in, you're, it sucks as a small business. I mean, that's kind of the sense, because that is an indicator of the market. We also see the challenge when we have conversations with developers who are even moving into existing small business neighborhoods, Ninth and Ninth, for example, of saying, "We want to somehow ensure that your rents are affordable for the kind of small business that we want and encourage there." And it's really challenging, because we see this in Sugar House again, you start seeing, as soon as you start seeing the national chains coming in, it's an indication of level of rent, that I think is, we haven't found a balance, or are we, or can we even influence that? I mean, that, any kind of information you could provide, even on a national level, would be, I think, really helpful.
I'll absolutely look into that.
So something else related to your survey, and it's number three, that I'm really intrigued with, and there's this idea that I can't afford to market my business. Does providing an opportunity to promote a business area start to get to that, or do you think it's really specifically my business?
I think it's a little bit of both. So let me answer that in two ways. I think that a lot of the work that we do as an organization when it comes to educating businesses, they are one of our audiences that we're looking to educate. One of the major things, one of the major conversations we have with them is the notion, it seems simple, that a rising tide floats all boats. And so often, often businesses initially join or partner with Local First Utah because they feel like, "This is another way to market my business, this will increase my SEO exposure online, or how come you don't add my individual sales in your newsletter things along those lines?" And I frequently have to come back to those businesses to explain, we are not, we're not a membership organization, it's one of the things that sets us apart from a Chamber of Commerce or another group along those lines, that we are an educational group and we are a nonprofit group. And so I believe that as we are encouraging citizens to take that shift in their spending, to participate, really honestly, to participate in their civic community by being in the businesses that are in their neighborhoods, that when a business is branded as locally-owned, if we are doing our part of educating the public, and the businesses are branding as locally-owned, those things will come together. There is some other information, sorry, I don't have a specific handout in which to include it, but it is this same study from 2014, found that the sales growth, so if you consider, across the board, independent businesses are faring better than they have in the past, but businesses that are in communities with active buy-local-first campaigns are doing even better than their counterparts. In 2014, the difference was in sales growth of independent businesses in communities with a local-first initiative was at 9.3% of growth, and businesses without a local-first initiative was only at 4.9% growth. So yes, the, marketing those neighborhoods, marketing the general concept of buying locally does do better for a business, and that's-
Yeah, I would imagine that it's challenging for the city to provide resources to promote an individual business, but Central Ninth is a good example, where I think a partnership with the city to brand the neighborhood and the shopping experience-
Right.
...and what that looks like-
Right.
...and who might be there, seems actually pretty logical.
Yeah, to market the concept or the culture behind what it means when you buy locally, I think, is really where some of those-
And perhaps even the culture of this neighborhood as a local-focused business.
Right. So I believe, you know, these, some of these answers in this, you know, challenges to independent businesses, a lot of these are the same things year after year, and I think it is sometimes the perspective of where the business owner is coming from. Even going back to the idea of difficulty obtaining loans or financing, we don't have a clear picture if that is because those people are denied of their loans, or if because the process- the process to even get to whether or not they are approved for the loan is too overwhelming.
Yeah, I could imagine it could be overwhelming to even just think about it.
Yeah.
So one final question, and again, I'm just sort of asking for your input. The drop in health care, I mean, it seems like that could very easily be tied to access through the Affordable Care Act, but I don't know. Have you... Do you have a sense of that?
I thought about that today while I was putting these numbers together. And I believe that's almost a... I don't know, you believe what you're told. And if as an independent business owner, you're told over and over and over, the Affordable Health Care Act is bad for your business, you're going to believe that to some degree. And then I think the reason that that dropped in 2015 was because when in actual...
People stop telling you.
Yeah. In actual practicality, it actually wasn't that bad. So, yeah. I think that's a question of perception more than reality.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, one question.
Go for it.
So this is just name your struggles or you give them a list of things that are typical struggle and they rank them or they pick a few out? How do they...
In this... So there are two things. So there is a rank these on a scale of one to five, how difficult they are for your business. And then there is some information about, you know, what are other concerns? Would you like me to offer those? They're a little less concrete than these. So some of the other... Sorry, let me find the right page here. And now because these are more of a fill-in-the-blank answer, they're a little different. So other issues, and this is specifically for Utah businesses. Proper enforcement of signage and other codes, provide public parking, crosswalks and bike lanes to make our town more user-friendly. Advertise small business buying on billboards and local television. Educate owners, employees and the public on ever-changing alcohol laws. Expand tax incentives to local profitable companies with revenues above $500,000 but below $5 million. If a subsidy is given to someone to move in, it should also be given to all similar businesses that are in the area so no one is given an advantage over another. Government should not be favoring one business over another. A government should be able to offer incentives to bring a business to their area, but not at the expense of other businesses in the area. Things along those lines that are quite significantly more specific to whomever might have been answering the question.
Okay. And my second one was looking at number four, that my customer base is strictly financial that actually went up 5%?
Yeah.
How much is perception, how much is reality? What are we looking at here, do you think? I guess my concern is that there could be numerous factors into that, right?
Yeah.
House rich, cash poor, depending where you are in the city or just poor in general. Recovery is not here. Some sense of this. Because it puts a squeeze on everything else, right?
Right. So I don't know. We don't usually study the individual consumer, so I don't have any other, like, data in my mind to try and correlate about why that might... Why that might be the case. That could be perception. It could be other rising costs of living in Salt Lake City, that our housing costs are increasing.
Yeah.
Things along those lines and that impacts spending.
Andrew, may I... I mean, it sounds like you're getting to this, and I'm thinking maybe this is what it gets to is disposable income possibility.
Yeah, I think so.
So either the reality or the perception of disposable income?
Either way, it speaks to everything else we've been talking about, that businesses are going to struggle if people cannot buy things.
Right.
And whether it's because it's low income in general in a neighborhood or a low number of folks with a low income or a large number of folks but little disposable income, small businesses are going to get hurt because prices are going to win out.
I think there's... I think this could go back to perception. Is there ever going to be a time where we, as the public, are going to say, "We're not struggling financially"? We're always going to be financially struggling. So, you know, businesses will... I think it just depends on how often they hear that from their customers and possibly how often they hear from their customers, "This is too expensive. I can't afford this," things along those lines.
Thank you.
But it occurs to me that one of the things we may... And I'm not... I don't know if this is a question for you, but maybe for the council. It occurs to me that one of the things we may be able to influence, and maybe this is one of the criteria we want attached to it, is how expensive are components of someone's income or their household expenses? So for example, if your percent of income expense for housing goes up, then your disposable income for other things goes down. And the same thing can be held for transportation. And we definitely have parts of the city where their percentage of household income to some of those sort of traditional expenses would be considered pretty high. Transportation and housing are the two that sort of pop in my mind. I know that Mike's done some of that data collection as well, and perhaps we could staff Allison, maybe we could look to hand for some of that information as well. Because I think it gets to that disposable income question in a pretty direct way.
And I believe the ACS section of the census data also provides updates on those. I'm not sure how local they get, but we can certainly follow that up.
So Kristen, I really appreciate you being here, especially on behalf of Buy Local First. Just two follow-up questions. I don't expect you to order to talk about them now, but I'm sure if council members have other questions, we can send them to you and you'd be willing to respond. Something to think about on what I was thinking is in regards to English as a second language businesses and how we can tap that market and bring in them across the city, not just to a particular region. And the second question I had is maybe on the next census, you could look in... Or the next questionnaire that you throw out there is ask what's working. That way, we know exactly what economic driver is helping these businesses, so, you know, we can spread the word. We're not asking for trade secrets. We're just asking, what is working for these businesses in these neighborhoods?
That's great, yeah. Absolutely. And I can provide you with the full survey results. There's other information in that independent business survey. I can provide you with the full results for both 2014 and 2015, and I think that might help some of those.
Yeah, and if you could think about, you know, maybe supplying us with an answer in regards to, you know, minority-owned businesses and how we can look into that.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness to be here and help us out with this effort.
Yeah, certainly. Thanks.
Next on our fact-finding session, we have Jason Mathis and those with him with the Downtown Alliance. I don't know if you're going to bring them up to the table, you're going to subject them to our pain and suffering that we're going to ask them?
A slow parade.
It's just you.
One at a time.
All right.
Over and over again.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me to come here today. I always feel like I'm among friends and I appreciate that. I did want to start out and just say, when Allison called, it was not surprising to me, but it was a little interesting to me because I feel like we've already gone through this process in some respects with Enterprise SLC, and I know many of you participated in that conversation. You've probably spent some time talking about that a little bit already, but as you know, Natalie Gockner spent about a year surveying 70 businesses across Salt Lake City and coming up with some very specific recommendations about what the city could do to improve economic development and came up with this report. And I'm thinking you probably have a copy of it, but if you don't, my friend Nancy, who we recently stole from the Salt Lake City Council offices, is going to revive her role and hand out a copy for each of you. She's done this before. I know. That is true.
Thanks a lot for rubbing it in, Jason.
Just in case, yeah. Just in case you haven't seen this.
We really appreciate that.
Just in case you haven't seen it.
There's nothing different in this than what we received.
It's exactly probably what you have already, but in case you haven't seen that...
That I've memorized.
I'm going to refer to a couple of the items in it, and I know that many of you participated. Derek came to, I think, almost every session that we had. I think James was involved in a lot of those conversations. I think Stan was there. Many of you probably participated in those conversations with Natalie, and I just wanted to point that out and point out some of her recommendations. I have three kind of specific recommendations for you today based on perceptions from downtown and suggestions about how you might go about improving economic development in our fair city. The first is really that you need to start with where you want to go. You need to come up with some very clear objectives at the outset. It's easy to get dragged into rabbit holes and follow paths down a variety of whatever the issue du jour is of the day, and it's helpful to have a long-range plan and some strategic vision. And to that point, it's, I think, a smart idea to look at the existing plans and think through what those say. As part of the Enterprise SLC recommendations, Natalie came up with seven strategic options. I'm just going to read them quickly, not word-for-word out of the report, but just to highlight what those options were. The first was that Salt Lake City should embrace our role as a regional leader, that this is the place in our state where the economy should be the strongest and that the city really has an obligation and responsibility to stand out among all other cities in the state as being the champions and doing economic development the best, better than anybody else does it. Two, Natalie suggested creating the right leadership structure and including a cabinet-level economic development leader. That was a recommendation that came from that report, and it's something that I think is worth considering as you are moving forward. Making sure that the RDA is aligned with economic development goals. I remember fondly the time that our friend Luke Garrett wanted to fund KCPW's ongoing operations out of the RDA budget, a position that our previous mayor wisely vetoed. I think sometimes it's easy to look at the RDA money as cash that can be used for almost anything and to forget that it has very specific purposes and goals. And align those specifically with economic development will really empower Salt Lake City. Explore public-private partnerships. The city already has a relationship with the Economic Development Corporation of Utah, with the Downtown Alliance, with the Salt Lake Chamber. I think that these can all be enhanced and expanded and that that only serves to further the goals of the city as long as you're helping to direct those NGOs to make sure that we're doing what you want to do and we're following the policies and priorities that you've established. The fifth recommendation was an economic development ordinance review, and I have bolded and highlighted this in my notes to you today. Several years ago, Salt Lake City undertook a sustainability ordinance review where you hired an outside consultant to come in and look at every ordinance that the city has and say, "Is this sustainable? Is this help with our environmental sustainability? Is this helping us be good stewards of our resources?" I would encourage you to do the same thing with an economic development eye, to bring in an outside consultant and look at every ordinance that we have and say, "Good for business, bad for business, good for some businesses, bad for some businesses." And that as you move forward and you're considering ordinances, that you actually have the discipline to attach that to every ordinance that you look at and try to think through, what will the impact of this be if we pass this law? How will this impact our economy? How will this help us direct Salt Lake City's economic development based on the goals that we establish? Finally, Natalie had priorities, policies and tools. She had 12 specific recommendations there and five specific ideas about investment priorities. That gets me to the second element that I wanted to share with you. So the first was really coming up with some specific goals and implementing existing plans. The second is really understanding your role as a council, thinking about what are the tools that you have at your disposal? The budget, you are the keepers of the city's treasury. You get to decide how much money is spent and where it's spent. Not only is that a reflection of the actual money that gets spent, but it's a reflection of your priorities and a reflection of the priorities of Salt Lake City. I might suggest that you do a comparative analysis of Salt Lake City versus other cities along the WASAT front. Ask what percentage of Salt Lake City's budget are we currently spending on economic development as compared to the overall budget? And then look at other cities like West Valley, South Jordan, Harriman, Ogden, Provo. See what percentage of their budget is being spent on economic development. And it doesn't mean that we have to match them or that we have to hit the median, but I think it's helpful for us to take a look at that. If we have a $300 million budget as a city, what percentage is being spent on economic development? And does that mesh with what other communities are doing across the WASAT front? The other element, of course, that you have, the formal power that you have, is actually passing laws. These either regulate and guide the growth and development of our city, and these can either accelerate momentum or impede growth. As I've already recommended, I think an economic development ordinance review would be helpful for the council to take a look at and to fund in the next budget year. You also have another informal tool that you may not always think about, and that really is that you have a lot of friends. You have people who want you to succeed in the nonprofit world, in the private sector. It's helpful to understand the role of the city council, the role of the mayor, but also the role of the private sector, the role of developers and investors and small businesses and large businesses. And I want to commend you for undertaking this exercise because I think that one of the things that will come out of this is understanding those roles even better. The Downtown Alliance has a really strong partnership with Salt Lake City, and I want you to know that you can rely on the Downtown Alliance and other organizations like ours to do what we do best. For instance, every year, we create a comprehensive economic benchmark report. This measures all kinds of elements about the economy in downtown Salt Lake City. We make it available at our State of Downtown event in July, and we provide copies to the city. You could easily mimic something like this citywide and measure retail sales growth, office growth, residential growth. Having those facts at your fingertips will help you make better decisions. That's one example. The same is true of the private sector. You may have seen a really nice op-ed in the Tribune this Sunday from our friends Missy Greis, Micah Peters, Scott Evans and Keith and Chris from Form Development. If you didn't, I have a copy for you, but in the interest of saving trees, I won't pass it out. You can look it up online.
Is that your picture on the front?
It's not. Micah is much more handsome than I am, alas, and taller, too. And he says "bro" a lot more than I do. Micah, these guys had some very specific ideas. One is overhauling permitting process and improving customer service. I think you've probably heard that recommendation before. Setting clear goals and outcomes first and then creating a structure for implementation. I echo that to you today. Reshape zoning to be more workable for today's economy, help local businesses grow as well as recruiting new firms. Plan our strengths. Don't be jealous and remember that optics matter and to think creatively. So those were the recommendations. And I thought that this op-ed, really coming from the private sector, was very helpful and had some really valuable advice. I'd be happy to share privately with you, if any of you would like, conversations that I've had with specific businesses about challenges that they've had with permitting because I think that it's helpful for you to understand what those look like and it might be helpful for you as you're thinking about ordinances and the role that the council plays in shaping those ordinances moving forward. My third and final point, I know we're all grateful for that, is that you make decisions based on data and expertise and not emotion or conjecture. I have a small gift for you. Nancy, would you mind helping me again? This is a great book. It's not a gift because I wouldn't presume to give a gift to a council member. This is an educational material, a book called The Responsive City, and it talks about how leaders can focus on outcomes, not on politics, not on emotion. You all have a very tough job as elected officials. It's easy to get swayed by a single constituent or an emotional response to some problem, whether it's real or perceived, and then you use the tools at your disposal, like ordinances or a budget, to address those, sometimes with unintended consequences. An example of that is the sugar hole in Sugar House that led to a demolition ordinance that was really problematic for businesses across the city. It was as a response to a specific incident that I think council member Soren Simonson had pursued, and it caused a lot of problems in a much larger geographic area than just addressing this one issue. And I can give you some other specific examples like that. So set broad policy goals and then use the data and information to make the best choices to achieve those policy goals. This book really talks about some great examples from other American cities where data has been used to solve major problems throughout municipalities, and I think it's a really valuable read. Jesse Dean, my friend and colleague, gave it to me for Christmas because that's the kind of nerdy relationship that we have, and I enjoyed that, and so now I'm sharing it with you. When I say make decisions based on expertise, it's not just about new data coming in. I beg of you to use the talented city council staff members as trusted advisors and partners in your decision-making. They're not just hired help. Russell Weeks is one of the smartest people I have ever known. He understands the history of our community. He understands the issues that have happened 20 years ago. He comes to almost every Downtown Alliance meeting we have. Jennifer Bruno, Cindy Gus Jensen. Cindy is so loyal to you. She, as you know, she would give you the shirt off her back, and we're not asking her to do that today, but she just cares so much about you guys and making sure that you do the best that you can. And I think it's helpful to think of these people as a really important resource. And I would encourage you to encourage them to challenge you, to challenge your assumptions, to push back. I think sometimes as an elected official, it's easy to feel a little bit imperial and that you have an idea and your will should just be executed. But really, the best thing that the city council staff can do for you is to push back and to challenge your ideas and assumptions and make sure that the decisions that you're making really are the best decisions that you can. I want to point out that you already have the kernels of a powerful economic development tool with Peter Mikowski. Peter's kind of a one-man show right now, and if I think... But I think that if you add additional resources to economic development, if you help to empower Peter and a whole economic development team, the city really is poised to... the city really is poised to do some incredible things. Let me also extend that sentiment by saying that somehow we need to empower every employee of Salt Lake City to solve problems and help citizens succeed. I think too often, city employees are made to feel that their only job is regulation and finding ways to say no. If we could shift that culture and help city employees feel empowered to help residents and businesses succeed, trusting them to make good decisions and having their backs when and if they fail, I think you'll unleash an economic tidal wave of positivity. Trust the private sector to grow the economy. Trust your friends to help and support you, and trust your staff to challenge your assumptions and help you make better decisions. It's tempting sometimes to try to want to recruit the next big company, and I encourage you to be thoughtful about what that process looks like. Downtown wouldn't be the same if Goldman Sachs had not moved to our community. But the real growth for our city, the real growth in economic development, will come from existing businesses that grow and are successful. And as you think about your role in allocating budget, as you think about your role in coming up with new ordinances or refining existing ordinances, having an eye to helping all of the existing businesses will be incredibly important. I want you to know I love this city. I wake up every day excited about what our future holds, and I'm really grateful to each of you for our service. I think it is a hard thing to be on the city council. I know you don't get paid a lot, and you have to deal with crazy constituents sometimes. I'm one of Stan's crazy constituents, and there have been times when he's told me, just shut up, I don't want to talk to you anymore. But I voted for him, and I'm his constituent, so he has to. He has no choice. You deal with difficult issues, and you have to do hard, you have to make hard decisions. And I just want you to know how much the Downtown Alliance appreciates the role that you play and how much I personally appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
Jason, I do want to clarify. I don't think I've ever told you to shut up.
It was close.
I think I did tell you that I'm going to talk to you right now.
Yeah.
But I also just want to make sure I'm clear. You referenced in talking about this book that we should be careful about being persuaded by individual constituents, so that's kind of you.
That is true.
So I just want to make sure.
Unless I have really good data for you that I'm bringing to the case.
I did want to, one of the themes in your comments was a review of our process. In particular, something that keeps coming up is the specifics around building and housing and the permitting process. And I just wanted to check in with Cindy and provide her with an opportunity, because I know that the council has funded and is looking at very specifically delving into that issue. So I just wanted to let Cindy know, have an opportunity to talk about it, because I don't want people to think that we've forgotten about that, and we do have very specific plans around that.
Our audit rights. Okay. So what we're hoping is that the speakers that come in today will inform the scope of our audit, and we also have sought feedback from the administration on it, and we'll, as we add to it, we'll keep in contact with them to do that. Even, you know, the editorial, there are all kinds of inputs that we're trying to include. We have a base scope, but we feel like it would be doing a disservice to everyone if we didn't go out to the folks who have been telling us about problems, the complaints we've received, or the people that are mentioned tonight, and do a quick interview with them, invite their input, and then we're going to send the scope out for comment, so that really it's a robust scope that's built with some community input, so we can have a good study. We have several firms who are on contract with us already, and so we don't have to wait for a six-month RFP process. We'll send it out to those firms. They can give us, each of them, give us a proposal, and then the council will decide which one to choose. So the administration has indicated that they would collaborate with the council on that, so that's where we're heading, and we're at that part where we're going to take all of this input and include it, and then do the interviews.
Great.
Thank you, Cindy. And so I think it's an opportunity, when you suggested that you have some people who might be able to provide some, to inform that process, giving those contacts to Alice would be great, because it's definitely, I think, the intent of the staff to go out and talk with some of those people.
Perfect.
And so, Jason, one other question. I mean, I appreciate your sort of broad overview, but as you're involved in the city and as you sort of incorporate your day-to-day activities and your relationship with the city and your relationship with the business community, could I try to pin you down to like one or two really sort of high-level concerns or issues or additions? Or, I mean, in the perfect world, what would the priorities or what would the assistance be from the city? What would we be focused on that either we need to currently reinforce or that just doesn't exist? Or, I mean, Natalie's work is really incredible, and it's truly the foundation of what we're doing, but we're hoping to really get down into those specifics. What action steps could we take?
So the first, and Cindy did a great job just talking about that, is really looking at ordinances as they exist. Taking that one step further, I think really understanding what the process looks like and how does that process work for a business, for an existing business or a new business who's coming into town. How do our ordinances match up, or not ordinances, how does the process match up with that? And one concern that I've heard is people come in, ask for a building permit, they're told one thing from one person, and then they bring back, they fix whatever it was, come back, someone else tells them, oh, no, you need to do this, fix that, come back. They're told something completely different by the third person. I'm not sure exactly how you fix that, because I do think you want to empower city employees to make good decisions and to help people out. Somehow, I think the culture has to shift, and I alluded to this in my remarks, from a culture that always, that is initially always saying no, to a culture that's saying, yes, we can do that if we do X, Y, and Z, or yes, we can find a solution for that, or I understand what you want to do, the ordinance says this and this, but if we look at it from a different perspective, we're able to accommodate you in this way or this way. So thinking about the process, but also how do you shift the culture to make it less regulatory and more empowering for residents and for city employees?
And so as we explore this, is it your perception that the challenge is sometimes the answer is no, and that's the end of it? I mean, because what I hear you saying, I think, is that there's a role for the city to play in how to help people negotiate our system, and some of it may be just that, just that, getting through the system, but some of it actually could be specifically ordinance-related.
Yeah, I think it's ordinance-related and it's process-related. I could give you an example for the Roost Chris Steakhouse, that people came to the Downtown Alliance. We intervened, and because we knew the system and knew the right people to talk to, we were able to get that project to move forward. Under Current Bar is another example. They had all kinds of issues, because we knew we could go to Mary Delamar Schaefer and Jill Love and say, we need to fix this, and we were able to find solutions for that. I could give you.
But you're talking about some pretty sophisticated developers there. You're not talking about somebody who's coming in with a new project and doesn't know the system.
Fortunately, these were people who knew to contact us, who said, we're paying you guys to help us out, so help us out. We did something recently with the Boyer Company where the initial answer was no, a project that they have on State Street, and the initial answer was no, and we said, well, let's find a way forward. And Orion was great. Orion totally stepped up and helped us, and we found a solution. Over the last eight years, there have probably been two dozen, three dozen, or more times when we've intervened to help someone solve a problem where the original answer was no, and we said, let's take a look at it, let's understand the ordinance, we'll go back and fight on your behalf. And then inevitably, it's worked out right. People shouldn't have to rely on the Downtown Alliance to have a good outcome. They should be able to have that happen just as a basis of the way that the city operates normally.
Stan, can I interject on that? To marry that comment with the editorial, and I agree, it was a great one, that perhaps in the process of our audit, we could look to funding or creating or shifting a position in the administration to get to that single point person, somebody who really understands the output of the audit and helps, or at least is versed in the guidance as we adjust our ordinance as needs be, but is also that cultural shift in the city, someone that can embody sort of all of those points. I'm glad the Downtown Alliance is here and that you're going to keep being here and you're going to keep helping your clients and the businesses around here find a way through it. But I think that you're right, and the editorial's right, that the output of our process could result in a really specific person here that helps with that.
And I would say, too, just to add on to that, it's great for us, and as Stan said, these are sophisticated developers who know that they can come to us and we'll go to bat for them. There are lots of smaller developers who don't have those resources, and there are lots of people who are not within the very narrowly-defined geography of downtown, but in the wider Salt Lake City, that we don't have that responsibility for assisting and helping.
So, and so what I'm hearing you say, and I'm totally in agreement, I think, is that regardless of whether it's an ordinance-based obstacle or just a process or perception-based obstacle, you shouldn't have to know somebody to figure out how to use the system. You should be able to have a contact or a really, a process that flows very well, that helps you identify how to get through the system, or a place you can go to get that kind of assistance. And you shouldn't have to either throw up your hands and walk away or track you down or track a council member down or track the mayor down or whatever that looks like.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Derek.
I think Aaron got to the meat of my question, because, you know, as the newest guy on this roundtable here, my question is, as legislators, how do we go about changing the culture to, you know, when a business owner or somebody who wants to develop a piece of property first enters the city, how do we change it so that they're not met with a no and instead met with a yes-if kind of approach? And it seems like your suggestion might help us get to that point, as far as, you know, shifting a full-time employee and maybe seeing what we get out of this business services audit. I just want to thank Jason and the Downtown Alliance, because I think you do quite a bit for economic development in our city. You focus, of course, just on downtown mostly, but you create an image for Salt Lake City that stretches far beyond our borders, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do here.
Well, thanks. We have a very good, mutually beneficial relationship. Lizzie's, Hummus has been a longtime sponsor of the Downtown Farmers Market, so we have a friendship and business relationship that goes back a long time.
And I'll say, just on that note, that my business would not have been successful at all from the get-go if it weren't for the Farmers Market. And so I think that as an incubator, something like the Farmers Market is, I mean, do you have any data on what the impact is?
We've tracked probably three dozen brick-and-mortar businesses. I mean, your business is a great one. Rico's brand Mexican food is the classic example, where Jorge started out selling beans and rice 18 years ago and now employs dozens and dozens of people and sells product in all kinds of western states. So that's a great example.
And gives back to the community.
And gives back to the community, yeah. Another advantage of helping to grow local businesses is that they're far more likely to give back to the community.
Derek? Did you have something you wanted to say?
Andrew.
I'm sorry, Andrew.
I believe I'm the youngest person here then, evidently, because I can't remember my name.
Wait, who was sworn in first?
I guess, was I?
Yeah, so he is the youngest.
All right. Emotionally, I might not be then. Thanks for the book, by the way. I've read most of it, but the point of Responsive City was technology helps us to be more responsive to each other, essentially.
Yep.
And I know from this body, I think our role of policy is to set out objectives and goals where to get to, and not necessarily to say how to get there. We can talk about Ovendam Budsmann or some other specific things about how to run things, but I think, I'm interested in, why did you bring this book particularly to us, and what are you hoping to talk to us about from that?
Sure. So you're absolutely right, that it's a book that really looks at the way that new technologies are helping to drive decisions that cities are making. The larger point that I wanted to make was that data generally is really important to you guys as you are making those decisions, that looking at a broad, unbiased, non-political data source which comes from technology is the best way for you guys to make decisions. So you set out broad policy objectives. You say, you know, we want to increase our employment base, we want more affordable housing, we want, you know, very generic things. And it's easy for people to come up and say, hey, I've got a great idea. Why don't you throw a million dollars at this and let's see if it works? Or let's try this and let's see how this works. A constituent, you know, I bug Stan, and he's like, all right, I got to get Jason off my back, so I'm going to do this issue, I'm going to try to solve this. And my advice was, and the reason I brought the book, was to say, really, to make decisions based on data, to make decisions based on factual information and not just an idea that someone may have. And I'll give you an example of, I think, a time when this happened, and this is somebody who I have enormous love and respect for. There was a conversation at the city about electric car charging stations, and I think the consultant had recommended that with new construction, put in one per 75. That was the recommendation. That's what the data suggested. Those were the best practices. And Jill said, well, 75? I mean, how many parking lots are built with more than 75? That doesn't seem like enough. What if we made it 25? And everyone in the council, this is her telling me this story, so I wasn't there. And so, okay, yeah, that sounds right. Let's do 25. Let's make it 25. The larger implications of that for development in the northwest quadrant, where warehouses are being built that have hundreds of parking stalls, was huge. And it wasn't a decision that was based on data. It wasn't a decision based on what an expert said. It was a decision that kind of came up during the council, and they said, well, yeah, that sounds right. Let's do that. 25 is better than 75. We love the environment. But it had implications and ramifications that went far beyond, I think, what Jill was intending. And if there had been some time to think through the data and think, well, where is development happening? Where are parking lots being built? What would the impact of this be in the northwest quadrant? The council might have made a better decision. And really, that was the point of the book, that thinking about that, using that data is really an important element of what you do. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was intrigued by your take, and from the business end of things, why this book particularly was resonating, and how that, what that means for us as policy. Because we talk about our budget and where do we put our budget, our money? What is the best bang for the buck long-term to create an environment where people can be responsive? So you're being very clear about data, being open about that, having access to it, and then making decisions based on that.
Yeah. All right, that's been, I think, really an instructive element of the whole collective impact that the county has looked at in considering homeless services, which is such an emotional and difficult issue to walk through. But this idea about really making decisions based not on NIMBYism, not on emotion, not on any other element, that would be difficult or easy to fall into the trap, really making decisions based on data is so powerful and it's difficult to refute. And if that's your baseline, if you say, these are the broad policy goals, this is the data we're going to use to make the decisions, it's hard to argue with that sort of line of reasoning.
Thanks.
Thanks. Jason, thanks for being here. And I think you're approaching us as a city council body, but also clearly as a good employee incubator business entity. You stole Nancy from us, and if you go after Russell Weeks, we might not invite you back here, so please don't take any more of our employees for a while, okay?
I really like Russell.
We don't need to function as an incubator for good employees in the city.
Training grounds for the Downtown Alliance. I like the sound of that.
I'm going to go back again to this how-can-we-say-yes cultural shift, because I think it's true that we could hire someone, we could create a position to be that single point person who's really empowered to do that. But there's also opportunity in the change and the shift to hire an economic development director, and that a director really creates a climate in any department and division. And so when we are interviewing the proposed candidate for that position, let's remember to ask that person about what kind of a culture they intend to create and our objectives as a council and a city in achieving more of that. How can we say yes? On the other hand, I have to say, though, that we also want to empower our employees to be able to defend our existing zoning, defend our neighborhoods, defend our small area and master plans. And I, you know, we have one in Ninth and Ninth that came up where the community felt like our employees were too much, saying, yes, this is, let's figure out a way to make this possible for you, and that it felt like it slipped through the cracks of the process that is a good process. So there's a balance to be taken there, and I think the burden falls on us and the blame falls on us often for inhibiting business, while on the other hand, we're trying to protect what we, the work we've done to create the kind of communities, the kind of business, not nodes, that we want to see. So let's think about that balance, maybe, and how we do that empowerment and how that can look and feel culturally. I think both sides are valid.
You guys have a tough job in a lot of ways to make that balance happen. Like, I get it. That's hard. It's really hard. It's not always. get it. That's, that's hard. It's really hard. It's not always one side or the other.
I want to also go back to your suggestion about a comparative analysis with other cities locally. And there's, because there's, it goes, on the one hand, to your suggestion and Natalie Gockner's suggestion, that we really empower ourselves for the unique place that Salt Lake City is, and what we have to offer that nowhere else does in Salt Lake City. So there's that. And then there is this suggestion that doesn't just come from you, but we get into it also when it comes down to employee salary compensation, and where do we compare ourselves to that's an accurate reflection of our unique economy and community. So I, I can imagine what the numbers might look like if we compare what we invest in economic development to Sandy, or Draper, or Provo. And I might think that we invest less. But I wonder, too, then, how we fairly balance the, you know, the burden of a doubling population Monday through Friday on our infrastructure, and the lack of tax dollars we have to support Salt Lake City and what's on the ground.
Sure.
And your thoughts on that, and why maybe you picked local cities to compare ourselves to?
So I would go back to, and this, this, I think, really speaks to Andrew's point as well about data. I wouldn't suggest that you should match anybody else. I wouldn't suggest that you say, well, if that's what Provo, if Provo spends 3% of their budget on economic development, we need to spend 3% of our budget. That's, that's the wrong answer. But knowing that Provo spends 3%, or that West Valley spends 4%, or that Ogden spends 70%, I don't know what they spend. But knowing those numbers and having that data, I think will help you make better decisions. And you can take all of those other things into account. So you and I are just sort of imagining right now what that might look like, and we have some ideas, but we don't have any facts. We don't have the actual data. And maybe that Salt Lake City is spending more than other cities on that type of economic development. I don't know. I don't think we have that data. But it would be important, data, as you're, as you've identified economic development as a priority for this year, thinking through that and understanding what competing cities in the Wasatch Front are doing, and then candidly, and I think it'd be a great idea, to look at other western regional centers. So what does Denver, what does the city and county of Denver spend as a percentage? Not the, what's the dollar amount, but what do they spend as a percentage of their budget on that? What does Portland spend? I hate to compare us to Portland, because it's been done so many times. But it would be worth having that data, so that you guys, as you're making decisions about budget, could say, we're kind of in this range, or we don't need to be this high because we do all these other things, or maybe we need to amp it up and do even more, because for a few years, we haven't devoted the same sort of resources. You can't make those kind of decisions unless you have that data to draw from, and you're looking at hard numbers about the direction that you want to go.
And lastly, I guess I'll direct a comment to my peers, but before I do that, you didn't mention impact fees, and I kind of thought you would.
I feel like you guys are on the case.
Oh. Are you gonna say the same thing after November?
We'll see what happens in November.
But I, my question is, in reference to this and the other data questions, are we even producing the kind of data that we need? And perhaps there is some kind of comparative analysis, and certainly we're gonna go ahead with an audit, but beyond the audit and beyond a comparative analysis, from day-to-day processing, are we, are we funding the kind of acquisition of data that we want to through Pam Perlich or our other, our other entities, where we can have really usable data that comes to us on a regular basis? And, and so maybe part of our question, directed internally, in terms of empowering the data-driven, in for decision-making processes here in the city, is are there data needs besides the city council in planning and permitting that they need that are not being fulfilled? So if we can loop that into our scope. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Aaron.
So Jason, I really appreciate you bringing to light the Enterprise Salt Lake City, Enterprise SLC, because we've heard it, talked, you know, talked about, touched on, and then dropped. I love to hear that it still is a valuable asset for Salt Lake City. You know, nobody bats a thousand. If you do, you're making millions of dollars. If you're batting 100, you're out of the league. And I feel that's where Salt Lake City's been, is we have been batting 100. We have not been using the resources that we have to have that mechanism where we're batting 400. We're one of the heavy hitters in the state of Utah, but we're not. We're not at all. And a lot of businesses are very diversified. You know, there's a theory that many streams make a river. And I feel that's where Salt Lake is, but we're using one stream at a time. We're not having them all flow together to be the heavy hitter of economic development in the state of Utah. So hearing these, these great suggestions from you and from Kristen, it's, it's helpful for me to understand where we're at and the perspective, from a larger downtown perspective to a smaller perspective. This is exactly what I think council members need, and especially me, you know, looking at it. So appreciate you being here, the thought that you've put into it, the thought that you've already done through Enterprise SLC, your willingness to continue to work with us. We're not perfect, but, you know, we're all on board. It's a priority for the council, and has been for the past two years. So really appreciate you being here, Jason.
Thanks, James. I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
We are still just two minutes ahead of schedule, Carlton. You see us so often now. It's just like you're a regular. Come on up, Carlton Christensen. He's with the County Regional Development. And are you bringing other people to the table, too? Here's another former Salt Lake City employee, Stuart Clayson. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're grateful to have this opportunity to be in front of the city council. When Salt Lake County created the Office of Regional Development back in 2013, the natural question that we would always receive after that is, you know, what's, what does that mean, and what does that contain? Often, it was thought that it was simply economic development, but it had a number of series components to that conversation, including planning, long-range planning, transportation, community resources, including, as you know, some of our homeless services and other block grants, as well as economic development, emergency services, and, and then some of our housing programs as well fall in that realm. I think one of the things that we've realized in our couple of years of existence, while some of those areas in county government obviously pre-existed that organization, is that those all overlap. You can't talk about economic development without talking about housing and workforce access to jobs. You can't talk about long-range planning, transportation, without knowing where your economic development sites are. And those are all conversations, as we overlay them and focus our resources that are going to play out in that respect. I remember during my tenure on the city council, for example, one of the largest challenges with a lot of the employers in the western industrial areas, they simply couldn't get workforce there. And they didn't have access to transportation, and that particular segment, income class, transportation's a real barrier. And likewise, as we look at Kearns, for example, has some of the longest commute times of any place in the valley to their employment. And so these all have factors that often haven't been overlapped in the past and looked at and examined. So as we go through our overview of where we want to go, as a, in particular, in economic development, I just ask that you keep that, other components in mind. I think certainly they have relevance to Salt Lake City. You're our capital city, and certainly have a large part in the economic viability of Salt Lake County. So I'm gonna turn the time, some of you know our economic development director, Stuart Clayson, and I'm gonna turn some time over to him as part of this presentation.
I actually, thank you, Carlton, and to the council, thank you all for letting us be here. I promised Carlton I wouldn't embarrass him, but I will have to say to Councilman Penfold, it is very nice to be sitting at this table, and you have really no authority over me, because now we meet each other on equal, on equal.
Yeah, that could still make your life really miserable.
I know you can, but you also realize I like a miserable life. Thank you, Carlton. So we put together a presentation. Allison asked us to put something together to kind of talk about where we are and where we'd like to go. Carlton framed the office, and I'm, I'm tasked with leading out on behalf of the county on regional economic development. So what are we doing today? That's kind of how we want to frame it. I know we have a short time. I won't bore you with a lot of details. The first thing we're gonna talk about is we're gonna talk about the Global Cities Initiative. And in this beautiful little box, I have a plan that we recently finished in partnership with the Brookings Institute and J.P. Morgan Chase. We were selected as a group of cohorts. We were the second round of cohorts, and we were tasked with developing a global export strategy for the Salt Lake metro area. And we just recently wrapped that up, week before last. It was a long, intensive planning process, and we worked with staff in the city, along with people throughout the county and the state. We also have three revolving loan fund programs, similar to what you guys have with your economic development loan fund program, which I'm intimately knowledgeable on, as well as your RDA loan fund program. We also are heavily involved in tax incremental financing throughout the county, and we are the second-largest investor in all of your RDA project areas. So you're welcome for giving you funding for economic development. Regional Export Plan, this is the Global City Strategy, and I can, I would rather you guys not read it. I'll leave you guys with a printed copy. It's on our website. What we found in Salt Lake County is, Salt Lake County represents over a third of the population of the state. So we have 1.1 million people. We are the largest exporter in that context. We're the capital city, which the capital city resides here under y'all's leadership, your leadership. Sorry about the y'all. We have a projected population that's, that's gonna double, and we have to figure out ways to kind of keep this strong economic development activity that's happening on a statewide, keep it going. And exporting is a really, a really effective way to do that. Now, in the plan, we have a lot of key findings. One of them is that a third of our exports from Salt Lake County are metal-related. I think we all know what that's linked to. But under the leadership of the collective business and political individuals that lead out in this state, we've moved towards diversification. Aerospace is a growing cluster. IT is also a growing cluster. And so our plan was all about identifying those strengths and weaknesses, and figuring out strategically how to deploy them. The implementation of that plan is gonna be turned over to the World Trade Center. We've entered into a, we're a, we're a member of their organization, but that membership is tied to the outcomes that we desire in the export strategy, which I will present after our thing. Back to that, what we found is one of the things, one-third of our exports are tied to one sector, but we have a multitude of hard and soft assets, and it's important that we're sitting here and talking to you all, because a lot of those assets reside under your jurisdiction as well, in the northwest part of the city and the county. We have an intermodal hub. We have two interstates that come together. We have a Mountain View corridor that's about to come online. We have a truly international airport. We have a multilingual population. We speak over 120 languages. I think that's right, Mr. Edwards. He'll correct me. And we have an indigenous population that has gone all over the world and then comes back and lives here. So we're, for a place our size, we're well-positioned to go globally. Two of the, two of the strategies, and there's a plethora of them, but we want to have a global positioning strategy around some targeted industries. Let's basically say, let's say, let's grow aerospace, and how do we get GOED and our local partners like the city to all coalesce around building that out. We also want to expand the export services ecosystem that President Lee managed by the World Trade Center. Thank you. Am I acting like I'm parched? So the plan, we want to have our SMEs, you know, we want better data collection. You guys were talking about data collection. We also are very interested in this effort that's been, that's being worked on around the creation of an inland port. You guys alluded to Enterprise SLC. I'm pretty excited. I have some intimate knowledge of that and know about it. Well, Natalie Gockner and the Kim Gardner Policy Institute are presently working on a market, a market assessment around creation of an inland port, which we can talk about more if you're interested. And then we also want to be a welcoming community. That was something that our mayor worked with the chamber on, to take care of our existing foreign-born population and try to get more, because they're an active part in growing your economy. Our EPA loan fund, we actually did it in partnership with Ogden City and the Salt Lake City RDA, and we have a project in Ogden City. We got a million dollars, and it's to remediate brownfields areas. So we can talk about that in more detail. We have an economic development loan fund that is a, has a loan loss reserve that's provided by our CDBG funds, and we're in partnership with six banks. It's not as big a pool as you all have with your economic development loan fund, and it has a little more restrictions. You guys are a little bit more footloose with your funds. But it's about job, job creation in targeted areas and looking at low, low-income census tracts. And then this is a program that Carlton might be able to speak with more authority on.
So you may have remembered a few years ago, in partnership with Salt Lake City and some of the surrounding jurisdictions, we did the Sustainable Communities Grant. One of the outcomes of that grant process was to create a TOD revolving loan fund. We are now, so we've been working in partnership with the state of Utah, who have put up some of their federal dollars for loan loss reserves. Salt Lake County has put in $2 million in that loan loss reserve, and we've been able to capitalize, I believe, we're up to about $35 million in private capital. And this is a loan fund that would allow developers to assemble parcels, get through some of the pre-development costs. It's a short-term, generally four to no more than, I think, seven years, but a very short timeframe that it would be taken out with conventional financing when the project moves forward. But with the mixture of state and our county funds, it, while it will be available statewide, it will, there'll be heavy emphasis within Salt Lake County, and so those funds are certainly available. We think this will help remove some of the barriers to that transit-oriented development and help facilitate some redevelopment through private sector investment. So we're excited about this. The fund itself will be administered by the Utah Center for Neighborhood Stabilization. It's a nonprofit that was established a few years ago between banks and credit unions, and they went through a competitive process of the state, and will be the administration of that fund.
Thank you, Carlton. So he just, he walked you guys through it. The other thing we do is tax incremental financing, and to also tie around TODs. There's, recent legislation just got passed, so that whole world is changing drastically. But traditionally, you have three types of project areas. You have URAs, which is about urban renewal. You have EDAs, which is about job creation and economic development, and you have CDAs. I think Justin Belavo, who might be in the audience, has heard me say on multiple occasions that when someone has a hammer, everything seems to look like a nail. And what we found throughout the county is a lot of our communities were utilizing CDAs, because they didn't necessarily have the funds or were interested in making the infrastructure investments to create retail development that then would yield sales tax revenue. And under the mayor's leadership, we went through a whole process of creating, specifically around CDAs, county policies that create transit-oriented development, to create community building and placemaking, because if the state wasn't gonna give a statute, we wanted to lead out on that. So what are we doing for tomorrow? So we've talked about what we're doing today, and that's the really exciting part of what I'm getting to do.
And I, as I, as I did the introduction, I think one of the things we're looking for is creating a process of bringing together some key stakeholders, too unlike the process we did, we've done in the homeless arena, that will play a part in this conversation. And as we look at that overlay of transportation, housing, economic development, and certainly air quality issues, will factor into that.
Yeah, Carlton alluded, on the west side, that even if we had job centers where people could work, do they have the skills to work at those places, and do they have the ability to get there? So looking at that through a regional lens and understanding where that comes. This is all part of, what we're doing this in the context of the Mayor's Future We Choose process, so taking lessons learned on how we've addressed homelessness in our collective decision-making process, and, and using that now not only to address kind of issues, but then identify opportunities and how we collectively move towards those. The other thing, part of that process, and this is kind of my, in my bailiwick, last legislative session, we have a prison moving. I think you guys might know a little bit about that, Councilman Rogers. So it's gonna leave a open site.
You didn't get us a room tax. I was waiting on that, Stuart.
I wasn't on your team. I, I take care of the team I'm on. So we have, we have an abandoned prison site that'll be coming online down in Draper, and the, the state legislator, Pat, created the Point of the Mountain Commission, and they're gonna be studying that area. And that's gonna be a major regional economic development zone that transcends local jurisdictions. It also is gonna transcend county lines. And we also feel like in the northwest part of the county, with Magna and West Valley and Salt Lake City, there is the opportunity for creating a major regional economic development zone there, and we would love to partner with organizations such as the Capital City, who has a major stake in turning that into something substantial. That potentially, we alluded to the inland port. That potentially, we alluded to the inland port. If we were going to look at an inland port and creating an inland port authority, if that's what the, you know, if that's what the state would like to do, those activities are more than likely going to coalesce around the intermodal hub and around where the two interstates intersect, and where there's like 3,000 acres of available development property. So, the last thing that I'm very excited about, and Carlton, Carlton went down this path for me, we actually took a group, and Jason Mathis, who was here earlier, with us, we went, and I actually told Councilman Kitchen about it, when we got back, we went to South by Southwest in Austin, Texas. South by Southwest started 30 years ago as a music festival, and now it's grown into a festival where you have art, media, and technology all converging within downtown Salt Lake, and it uses a multitude of public and private venues. The president actually opened the event this year, and the first lady was there on a panel, and a couple of people who were on our trip with Queen Latifah and Missy Elliott. After walking around and letting our team see it, Austin's a fine city, it has no public transportation, it's hot, and it's in Texas. I feel like from the...
They like Texas.
Texas is okay. I grew up next door to Texas my whole life, so I've got little brother syndrome. So, what I think, we have many tech companies, you all oversee a very successful music event that, I don't know what you're planning on doing it, but in Twilight, we have a pretty substantial film event in Sundance, but how do we, and we're going to follow the collective approach that we did with homelessness, but how do we all come together and create an event that is not the OR show? We're very lucky to have the OR show, but it's a trade show. But how do we create an event that is a celebration of who we are and where we've come from and where we can collectively go? And South by Southwest is, I use that as an example, we don't want to recreate that, we don't want to partner with them, but how, like, I think it's time, and having Jason there, who's kind of in charge of downtown, as we kind of seed this and talk about it, downtown Salt Lake is kind of the time to do it. And it's probably not in January, where it's super cold, but that's something that I'm very excited about, because what it does is it not only allows us to be proud of who we are and where we've come from, but as we then we show ourselves to the region, you guys talk about benchmarking ourselves against Portland or other communities, doing this and having people come and say, whoa, this place is really great. I mean, one of the things that, when I worked for the governor's office, GOED, and I think Jeff would attest to this, they like bringing me in to talk to these companies. One, because I talk a little bit different, and I kind of make people laugh sometimes. But I'm able to kind of talk about as an outsider, like, share my perspective on why we're a burgeoning kind of national and international economy that's on the verge of an explosion, and people are going to figure it out, so let's get ahead of that. I hope we didn't go over too long.
Yeah, please, if there are questions that we can respond to, or...
Oh, there'll be questions, I'm sure.
Okay.
You know this body, Carlton, come on.
They're a fine and esteemed group.
Okay, we'll start with Stan, if that's okay.
I have a couple of questions, Carlton, related to some of the direction that you're developing in collaboration with the county mayor. And one of them is the, this concept of a free trade zone and inland port, and some of the conversations that's happened around the northwest quadrant opportunities. And I'm just wondering, I've had some conversations with Mayor McAdams, but it's been a while about the role the county might play in looking at county-wide economic development. I'm just wondering how you're looking at the range of tools that are available to the county, and some of those are state, some of those are local municipalities, some of those are county. How do you see those coming together? What's the mechanism for pulling those opportunities together?
You know, that's a great question, and one of the, the Future We Choose program that we're talking about and bringing some of these parties together, we actually would like to go back and evaluate, one, how we look at incentives and how we prioritize those and place those. Because if you look, for example, in the county's investment in tax increment projects, it runs into the hundreds of millions of dollars annually. It's a fairly heavy investment. If we were to go back and evaluate all those and say, did we get $100 million worth of benefit from that? I'm not sure what that answer's going to be. Clearly, we've done it, and we're moving forward, but if we're looking about where we're going to go in the future and how we might strategically use some of those, I think, you know, the question might be, is it cheaper to incentivize, for example, a small emerging company that has the high potential of growing here locally than an expensive relocation? Now, a lot of those are in state incentives and through income tax and some other means, but you might look at it for maybe a little bit less money, you might strategically pick some companies that really are growing, and then they'll set their footprint here. So, I think we have to, we do have to take a step back and look at it. Fortunately, we're in an economy where you won't keep your foot off the gas pedal. I think it's probably a time to take a second look at that and say, are we heading in the direction that we want to? One of the things I witnessed down in Austin is, they're growing about 10,000 a month at an incredible pace with no infrastructure, really. I couldn't figure out why the Lyft driver took me off the freeway at midday, and I thought I was going for a long ride. And basically, it was a faster route to go through the neighborhoods to get me to our hotel at the University of Texas campus than to go stay on the freeway. And for a city that's growing like that, that's a bad prospect going forward. But clearly, it's a, it's a great, you know, inviting place for companies to go to. So, I think, you know, we have to look at all those issues and to evaluate, and I think part of that will be, we're probably going to look at different incentives than we've historically used.
So, as you're looking at incentives, and I think one of the things we're exploring is what opportunities and what role do we play? I mean, very similar sort of conversation that I think it sounds like the county's having. It's like, what, at what level do we insert ourselves in a process? What level do we incentivize? Do we recruit? Do we target? I mean, what that looks like. And so, I'm hopeful that we figure out a mechanism so that the county and the state are leveraging each of our advantages to the best possibility.
Would you allow me to chime in, Councilman?
Please.
I know you directed the question to Carlton. One of the problems that we have, to just be quite honest, is the state, the relationship between state and local is just, it's disjointed. It's schizophrenic at best. The state has built their entire strategy around clusters, which made a lot of sense at the turn of 2000, when Michael Porter wrote his book, who actually is probably friends with Carlton's older brother, and he made a lot of money with the competitive advantages of nations. And so, we chase sectors, right? That's why the state has their cluster program, and it makes sense from a state perspective. But when I was here, and we would talk to the governor's office of economic development, you know, yeah, it's good to have clusters, but when you have people on the local level, you have to provide them services. And it's very difficult for the capital city, which has a population, in daytime work population increase of 80%, to kind of deal with that, because they're not invested here. What I'm hoping in kind of a grand scheme is that as we all start talking about this, personally, it's very exciting that the city, Salt Lake City, is talking about economic development. That is very exciting to me. And what I believe can happen is we can sit down with the county and the city coalescing with our other municipal partners and saying, this is what economic development means to us. What does it mean to you? And what I see us doing with tax incremental financing is we're putting a Band-Aid on a bigger issue. And if we're going to talk about economic development, for me, it's about quality job creation. And for me, it's about creating quality jobs for those households that don't achieve that opportunity. I don't understand why we have census tracts where people are living below the poverty line in a state with the lowest unemployment rate in the country. That's, for me, that's unacceptable. I don't know if that's a Democrat or Republican thing, it's just a right thing. So, where are we creating those jobs? And what excites me in Salt Lake City about that west side, where Carlton grew up, as opposed to down in Lehigh, where Silicone Slopes is, is Silicone Slopes is great, we're very lucky to have it, love the tech hub. It is mainly males, and it's not stratified, and someone who has a high school degree can't go get a technical job and then go get on and stratify. But if you have...
It's mainly white males. Yeah, it's a very specific demographic.
Absolutely, and that's fine. I'm happy to have that as part of our employment sector. But then you take, and you all, a lot of you guys were here when we had the opportunity to go after Boeing. We didn't get it. But you get a company like that, and when you get into their organization, into their ecosystem, they tend to keep you trained and keep you moving up. And that's what I'm excited about, because then we can get into, Councilman, we have not met, but we can get into your district and Councilman Rogers' district, and we can start digging down and creating those opportunities that frankly, Kinnickot used to be that.
Right.
And what we found through Global Cities is, that has, that life of that kind of employment center is going to go away. It's not going to go away tomorrow, but we need to be positioning ourselves for the future, for the next 100 years, because that's the Utah way.
Well, and I appreciate that comment. It's one of the challenges that we face, and Carlton, you're aware of this, because we've had these conversations back when you were on the council, is that the model the state looks for income, jobs with high income, doesn't work well for the municipalities that have to end up providing the services, because we don't see that income. We don't see any revenue based on that income. We see revenue based on a tax structure that is all based on property or sales. And I remember running, and I'm going to be running some numbers, I think Jennifer ran some numbers years ago, for a project that the state wanted us to subsidize with sales tax revenue, and brought in some very high salary positions, but we figured that for us to recoup our subsidy, we'd have to have those people spend every dime of their salary in the city to recapture the sales tax revenue, and that just doesn't work out for us. So, how do we have that conversation with those three entities, which I see as the, you know, the local city municipality, the county, and the state? Because I think that there's got to be someplace where we are aligned, and there are some opportunities that I think are beneficial to all of us. And helping us figure out what those roles are and the part we can play in putting together a package is going to be really critical going forward.
You know, one of the unintended consequences of online sales is, and the shift to it, and you know what, I'm sure you're experiencing in your own sales tax collection, is that it will probably force ultimately the conversation about how do you calculate sales tax? And how is it apportioned and those kinds of things, which is almost, you know, politically impossible to do today. The 50/50 is probably as written in stone as ever, but the other component is coming so quickly at us that it's probably unrealistic to think that it'll be part of that same conversation.
So, two more questions, if I may, Mr. Chair. I mean, we also share your frustration with finding it difficult to demonstrate how we recapture tax increment in the long term, because I don't think we could show a revenue projection that matches our investment in our tax increment areas either. And so, that's a challenge that I think I'm really intrigued with working through with the county, to see how we can maybe do a better job evaluating that or figuring out how that structure might work. I'm a little cautious around economic development zones. I know that this came up during the session, and one of the concerns that Salt Lake City expressed was that we don't want to lose our ability to capture tax revenue in an area, and that was part of the conversation around the former prison location, and we were pretty adamant that we wanted to be able to fund long-term services out in the northwest quadrant through traditional recapture of property tax or whatever tax system we have out there. So, I just share that with sort of a caution that we have when we're looking at, I think there are some tools we could provide through economic development zones. I'm really intrigued with the multi-county kind of conversation, that sounds really interesting. But the caution for me is that a lot of people get their eyes on that tax revenue, and we have to look at the long-term sustainability for the city of providing those services.
And I would say that Mayor McAdams shares those same concerns.
Thank you.
We've got two, Derek and Van Aaron.
So, just looking at your part two here, what we're doing for tomorrow, and you spoke to your experience in Austin, Texas, in their South by Southwest conference. Do you have any data or information on what that brings into Austin? What that leads to as far as innovation goes down the road? How many startups come out of that? Or just general economic data around that? Because, you know, we have Twilight, which is 30 years old, and South by Southwest is now 30 years old. It'd be interesting to, obviously, they're not the same caliber, but I'm interested in maybe making some comparisons.
First of all, Councilman, I think the private organization that runs South by Southwest will be not too forthcoming with their data, but I do know this, they sold 80,000 tickets this year at an average ticket price of $1,000, and that's just off-ticket sales, not the corporate sponsorships that they've gotten. For me, and I appreciate your question, Carlton knows this about me, and I'm going to sound kind of like a communist, which I'm not, but I think the most important factor...
Communists are welcome here, by the way, just so.
What's that?
Communists are welcome here.
Oh, I know, you at least had one on the council before. So, I know for a fact, for me, the most important factor in economy is human capital. It's the human beings, okay? You pump enough money and assets into something, eventually you hit diminishing returns, okay? Everybody's taking an economics class, basically, and that's how it works. Innovation and growth that comes from the human beings in your marketplace. So, the thing that's compelling, that I kept hitting home with Carlton as we were walking around, which I think it's pretty cool I got him to go, and he's a fun guy to travel with, for the record. But I grew up in the southeast, and every young person coming out of college from the southeast, if you ask them, this is anecdotal, but I know it to be true, where are you going to go? I'm going to go live in Austin. Why are you going to go live in Austin? Because it's cool. And so, we already have the youngest labor population in the country, and we need to be reinforcing, they're working at companies like Domo, and they want to be here, but what I like about South by Southwest is it's, I don't really understand it, to be quite honest with you, and it's not really my cup of tea. I'm pretty boring. My wife and I go to bed at 9:00. For me, hanging out with my four-year-old is the greatest thing that I get to do. But what it is, is it highlights what makes Austin, Austin. And so, what I'm excited about, and I was not here 30 years ago when Twilight Concert Series was created, but as somebody who transplanted here, it's kind of interesting that through that time, it brought musical acts, it probably would have never come here in the past. But if you now go to venues like The Depot or Urban Lounge, we get, I've seen music that I've never even heard of, so mission accomplished. And I'm always saying to Carlton, what's the next evolution? And what I want to be attracting is the best global employment talent in the world. We've already got a good indigenous workforce that's young and wants to work at these companies, but let's bring the best and brightest minds from all over the world and let them be here, and then the companies will coalesce around them.
So, are you looking to emulate South by Southwest from the county perspective?
I think we're looking to hopefully start a conversation from a county's perspective. I don't think, I mean, I think it would involve the city. I think it would involve Visit Salt Lake, I think it would involve the chamber, I think it, so kind of following the same model that we used with homelessness to begin a conversation and test the waters. I mean, I'm just, I could be completely off-base, maybe we don't need to do this. But I know that Start Fest, or STEM Fest, which the state runs, and it's at the South Town Expo Center, it got 20,000 kids last year. And these were 20,000 kids that were interfacing with people from I Am Flash and all these technology companies, playing with this stuff. I don't know what it's going to look like, but I think if we get around and get all the bright minds in a room, we can, we could create something, and Carlton hears me say this all the time, but we could, let's create something way awesome. Does that, I don't...
Yeah, that helps.
But we don't, I don't think, right now, we have the data to show you that we want, so it's clearly in its infancy stage.
Yeah, it just seems to me that Salt Lake and Salt Lake County, as a region, we've got the goods, but somehow we seem to be near misses. And so, you know, this is a great idea, but it obviously needs to be refined and developed a bit further. If you could also just quickly touch on, I'm not very familiar with an inland port, can you tell me more about that? Is it the same as our foreign trade zone? Or is it...
Were you okay with me? I think the foreign trade zone would be a useful tool to support it. We actually talked to our council today about the inland port. Back in 1990, and I can get the council a copy of this, Allison, the county actually let out and did a study with a consulting firm out of DC that was wrapped up in January of 1990, and what was found from that is that the county should create a port authority. We don't have water, but guess what we have? We have... We have rail. We have interstate. And if you do a tandem, if trucking, sometimes they'll put two drivers in a cab so they can not break hours of service, but they can flip over. You can be from here to the east coast with a tandem truck driver on one haul. So a group of business leaders and community leaders went with the governor on a trade mission to China last year, and what they found is we have boats that are sitting a minimum of 30 days in the Pacific Ocean, just waiting to get into one of the ports so they can unload. Okay? We're a 12-hour train ride from all of those ports. So why not bring them in, put those Conex boxes on rail, bring them here, and use that as a port authority to service all the west and if not, the east coast? So what, that then got delivered to Derek Miller at the World Trade Center. They engaged the Kim Gardner Policy Institute. They were doing an assessment. The really great thing is that this is not a new idea. It was over 25 years ago. The county had this idea, the timing wasn't right. So I would say the foreign trade zone would, it's not the same thing. The foreign trade zone would be a tool, an incentive tool, to help make that happen. But that's kind of what the gist of it is.
When does Natalie Gockner and those at the Kim Gardner Policy Institute, when will they bring forward their findings?
So we're actually, our staff is working with them on that. A projected delivery date is going to be August, but we can definitely coordinate with Mr. Reberg and his team and keep them in the loop and keep you guys in the loop if you're interested.
James, it may be worth having a follow-up discussion about that.
For sure. Council members, we are running short on time with the county. We're going to have one question, turn to Erin. And any other questions, we'll submit them to Carlton and Stuart, and I'm sure that they'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do so.
Some follow-up conversations as well.
I have one really, really short comment after Erin's.
I'm interested in this focus on specific industries regionally, and wondering if you can just quickly, Carlton, tell us what, we hear about local businesses and the multiplier effect of those jobs. What industry is going to give us the biggest multiplying effect to create more jobs than that building does alone?
I would say the aerospace and composites industries. The composite sector, particularly for our region, has huge possibilities, because you basically can create anything out of composites, and it changes the dynamics of what you're creating. And it goes all the way from manufacturing to engineering to distribution. So there's lots of opportunities in that particular sector.
Thanks. So I'll assume that we will hear ways that we can strategize our economic development efforts to target these types of industries.
Yeah, absolutely. We want, I mean, you, you're our feet on the ground, as well as the other communities involved, and we definitely want to work with you.
Thanks, Carlton.
Just want to point out, on your regional economic development overview, Salt Lake City photo, Salt Lake City photo, Salt Lake City photo, Salt Lake City photo. Four of your five photos feature Salt Lake City. That makes us the king of the hill, so remember that.
You know, I actually--
That was intentional.
When I looked through it, I noticed that myself, and I personally take credit for all of them, so.
As you should.
Thank you, Carlton. I appreciate you and Stuart for being here. We're just going to take a quick five-minute break, give Allison a little minute, and us, as well as me. I need to rest my knees. Given up her time to go last so that Economic Development Corporation of Utah, as well as GOED, can leave on a timely manner. So we invite Jeff Edwards and his group to the table to continue our economic development fact-finding session. Are we going to, it looks like we're tag team, and we're going to have Val and all three?
Yeah, they asked me to join them, so I am.
Great. So we have GOED, as well as EDC Utah, as well as Salt Lake City Mayor Jackie Puskiewicz with us at the table.
Thank you.
So since we have, well, I don't know, Mayor, do you want to go first, since you're on the schedule first?
No, no, it's fine. I'd like to get them going, so.
Okay. So if it's okay with both of you, we'll start with Jeff and then go to Val. And I want to point out, Val, that you've got Teresa Foxley, she was here, is she still?
Teresa's here, in the back, right there.
Great.
As well as Jill Flagar, our managing director for internal operations.
All right, thank you. And Jeff, do you have anyone else here with you?
I don't. Mark, our director of business development, ran the Boston Marathon yesterday, and she's on her way back today, so hopefully--
Well, before you start, I just wanted to thank you both for being here. I know it's important, especially for Salt Lake City and your willingness to be here and collaborate with us.
You bet.
James, before they start, I have one really important question for Mr. Hale. Any ideas on Taysom Hill or Tanner Mangan? Just wondering.
None at all.
Okay.
No. I just read what you do in the newspaper.
You that I am, it matters.
Yes.
Great. Again, thank you for the invitation. It's been some time since the council has taken on this topic, and I'm really pleased to see it coming back again and for some good discussion today. So, and I appreciate the invitation to be here and also to be sharing this time with our colleagues at GOED. I took the questions that were sent, Allison sent to us, about how can the council attack some different areas, and I tried to be responsive to some of those ideas. So the first question was about, you know, how can the city facilitate business growth? And these are some of our, and again, this is from the EDCU perspective. So number one, you know, be an active participant in corporate relocation projects. I know there's a lot of discussion about what that means and how that works, and how does that function with small business, and I think there's some specific things that are out there. But there's some real opportunities that are out there, and I am convinced that Salt Lake City has many more opportunities than there are being taken advantage of today. Second one, you've heard already from Jason and others, you've got tools in your toolbox already. The RDA is an amazing tool that's been here for many years and really leads the state in so many ways. And I really think it's interesting to think about the ways that you're thinking about using it today. And I'd add as to that, the revolving loan fund, one of the best managed, the best operated loan funds in the state, and in my view, in many ways, underutilized. And I think there's some ways to make that going forward. You've heard from the county today about the idea of regional projects. I've always appreciated Salt Lake City's interest in being part of the region and being the capital city, but also being willing to reach out to communities around and the unique ecosystem that Salt Lake County is with the proximity to our other, the neighboring counties as well. Honestly, and again, you've heard this already in Natalie's comments and others, you have to have a strategic plan for recruiting. What do you really want? What does Salt Lake City really want to have in its, within its city limits, and what do those really look like? You've also heard already today, something I feel very strongly about, is that as you think about these projects, it's important to create a diversity of employment. We talk about high-wage jobs and wanting to attract software companies and startups and all that kind of stuff, and that's great, but there's also citizens of our city who look for entry-level manufacturing jobs and medium-skill wage jobs and medium wages that are still family-supporting, but reach all the citizens of the state. So as you're thinking about your strategy, it's important to be diverse. And lastly, I'd just say, I am just thrilled with this new approach to a cabinet-level economic development director. It's been a long time since the cities have that in place, and frankly, it's been, in my view, it's been a missing ingredient. I'm really looking forward to that. I appreciate the mayor taking the initiative around that. And I have to give a shout-out to Peter, who's been the one-man band and the guy who's there answering the phone 24/7 on projects we're working on. He's just done an amazing job, and you're really fortunate to have somebody with his dedication, his interest in being in place in that spot. You know, what are the biggest challenges that businesses face in Salt Lake City? Number one is the same thing that businesses all over the state face, and that's labor availability. With our low unemployment rate in the state right now, and the state is a 3.5% last week, someplace in that range. Parts of Salt Lake City are probably lower than that, parts are probably higher than that. Another side to that is business costs. And there I put not only the cost of labor, but also the cost of real estate. I don't know how many of you've looked for a commercial property in Salt Lake City in the last six months, or if you've looked for a residential property in Salt Lake City in the last six months. They're, it's getting hard to find, and prices are really certainly on the rise. And that's a consideration you have to take into account as you're trying to attract businesses here. Another side to that is how do you expand the pool of appropriately-trained workforce? If you look at the actual unemployment numbers, the statewide average is 3.5%. It's what's called the U3 measure. If you build on top of that, there's another measure called the U6, which adds the people that are marginally attached to the workforce, people that have maybe stopped looking for work, but now that want to come back, or people that are maybe part-time, that don't have the skill set. They might be, let's say, a stay-at-home mom who decided to stay home and raise her family, wants to come back to the workforce, but doesn't have the skills to do it and current skill set. There's lots of folks that have been unemployed and all kinds of reasons, but if you take those together, the 3.5 plus another 3.5 or so, you're almost at 7% of people available to work in our workforce with the right kind of training and the right kind of approach. And I should add, too, that another part of this that Salt Lake City is very unique in, and that is the strong presence of millennials. Now, I have some personal, you know, kind of testy experiences with millennials myself, but on the other hand, they actually represent the single largest segment of Salt Lake City's population. They represent between the 25- to 34-year-olds, they're the largest single-population sector in the city, and there's been a strong growth in that sector, 8% growth over the last five years of that sector. You've probably seen it. If you look at the rental properties and how the vacancy rates and all these new properties coming online, and many of them are filled with those folks. How is Salt Lake City going to reach out to those folks and try to capture them and keep them here in the city with the intellectual capabilities and the interest that they have as well? You know, what is, how does capital city better support small employers? And through my lens, my lens is about corporate recruiting. And I happen to think that corporate recruiting brings in new dollars into the community. Of course, you know, they are, they are future small-business consumers. If you're Goldman Sachs and you're adding 100 new people to downtown Salt Lake, what does that do to the restaurant community? What does that do to dry cleaners and bookstores and all those other things that those folks, when they're here in the city, want to do? And the same other side of that, too, if you bring large employers into the city, that helps keep tax rates and fees low for other smaller industries as well. So there's, in my view, there has to be a balance. There's opportunity for doing both things. Another thing, too, and James and I were just talking about, the impact that new, interesting companies have on our community, and some of those start small and they stay small. But some of them start small and get big. And with the right kind of incubators and the fertile soil of a city to really make it take off, that's what's happened in Austin. You and Stuart were talking about that, and the chemistry that's happened. Austin made a very deliberate effort to capture those small communities and to build all the infrastructure around to keep them, keep them going. And we've got a lot of the ingredients with that, with some really outstanding incubators, the Church and State guys, the Impact Hub, the stuff you guys are doing. There's a lot of really creative people that want to make that happen. I think there's another side to that. And then lastly, having schools through partnerships with schools and businesses about how do we help, reach out and help people in that category? Another one about nodes, this was a question about how do you support nodes? I think you support nodes through, you know, mixed-use development, having, think about not just, you know, cool restaurants and nightlife and the stuff that go with it, but where are people going to work? How do you mix employers into cool parts of the city? What could Ninth and Ninth look like if there was a software company at Ninth and Ninth? Or something else like that, that, another compatible use to go with that? And then the other side is having the right infrastructure in place. Right now, the city's, you know, on the cusp of having a brand-new fiber provider here that's going to change the infrastructure of the city in a lot of ways. If you think about where those nodes are going to be, where do all the services combine with transportation and fiber and all those other things to make it, make it there? You know, how are we going to make this going? I think you know what we do, recruiting and retention. We have a very, and that's a business that we're in, we do that every day. And retention is an important part of this. How do we keep employers that we already have here? How do we keep them in Utah? Not just think about recruiting new ones, but how do we help the ones that are here to stay successful and to grow? Lead generation. We have a very sophisticated lead generation system that we work on together with GOED about actively going out and recruiting and talking to companies in different markets around the country, and in fact, around the world, and making them aware of and trying to convince them to come to Utah. We have a strong marketing program with a new collateral and web development stuff, and then we have a really great research department. And right now, we have a master's degree economist on our staff. We always thought it was pretty good for Economic Development Corporation of Utah to be actually semi-legitimate, to have an economist on the staff. That was kind of a good idea. But Matt is just an outstanding guy, and he is, loves doing that, and I'd really offer to the mayor and to all of you, as you're thinking about things, if you need data, if you need research, let's take advantage of this service that's available to you at no cost, that we can put together and produce some good results for you. If you look back over the last about 18 months or so, here are some of the folks that have come to Salt Lake City through all of our combined efforts. You've got Cotopaxi, a great, very cool outdoor brand, CJ Whittaker and all those guys who turned it into a heck of a business. They've got 75 people moving into Salt Lake. Cotivity, which used to be called Connolly, these guys are a financial auditing firm for, especially around interesting types of financial models. The MyTime guys are a small-business software intended for small-scale professionals and small businesses. It's a really cool app-development thing with about 40 people. Foldax, a heart device, medical, heart valve development company that's here in Salt Lake with 10 new jobs.
They're in my building.
Are those the guys in your building?
Yep.
Awesome.
That's another one.
I'll come back to Goldman Sachs. The pharmacoeppro guys, again, a distribution, about 10 jobs for those guys. NQ Farm, natural products business, again, aimed at the kind of the nutraceutical space of the very new, interesting distribution model. CHG Healthcare does temporary medical staffing, doctors, nurses, all kinds of folks, with 500 new jobs in the city. And then if you roll those together, that's eight new companies, $51 million in new capex, and over, just almost 1,200 jobs if you roll it all together. Goldman's got yet another addition of 400 new jobs to Goldman Sachs. So that puts Goldman's total employment in Salt Lake City now at almost 2,500, which is amazing. And think about the impact Goldman's had on downtown Salt Lake and where that has gone. Anyway, I will stop there and turn some time to Mr. Hale, and then we can answer some questions.
Thank you, Jeff.
Would it be okay if Erin asked a quick question before we jump in?
Thanks, Jeff. Relating to your aspect of retention as part of your purpose--
Yeah.
--with EDC, also with the reference to the outreach with millennials and the big population we have there, and that a lot of startups are coming out of that process. There's an investment in a lot of different ways as a city and as a broader community that we make in incubating these types of businesses. And I wondered if EDC Utah, and maybe you could speak to this later in the presentation, has identified some gaps in the matriculation path in terms of keeping those startups here, and where those gaps are that we can focus on as a city? And I know that that might be at a regional level in some aspects, but also, we do have a lot of great, small-scale incubator-type facilities here in our city--
Yep.
--that don't necessarily need a regional focus.
Yep.
So I'm hoping that maybe across the board with your presentations, we can weave in those gaps as you see them, and going forward, help us to be able to translate our investment, our focus into filling those spaces to keep those people here and build the jobs right here in the city.
Do you want to talk about that right now, or do you want to come back to that?
Whatever you want to do.
I'll throw one thought out, and that, you know, incubators are great, but most incubators make the mistake of keeping businesses too long. They stay because they're needy. I mean, they want to stay where they're loved, and they want to stay there, and it's really, it's scary to go out in the big, wide world. So I really, I think a strategy, and I've seen in other cities, is to think about the next step. You know, we're fortunate to have some good incubators already there, but, you know, you guys have got some space in your building. I hate to, but you guys have done that and say, we've got affordable office space for the next stage. Once they come out of the incubator, if they're there for 18 months or two years, they get kicked out of the incubator by design, and say, in the end of two years, you have to be ready to move to the next step if you're going to survive. That's a place where the city could do some thinking about, how could the city help to provide a place for them to land, some other office space, or another kind of a stage two to help them cross the Valley of Death, that kind of, that's my thought.
Jeff, can I tag on to that for--
Sure.
--quickly? So we hear some anecdotal information about, in particular, the University of Utah Research Park, that there are some education components that are really stellar there, gaming is an example, or video. And that those employees are leaving the state because we don't have the opportunities here for them to have career advancement. Does EDCU look at that sort of disconnect, the gaps that Councilmember Menon Hall mentioned between, so sort of what we're producing, what we are doing well from an education perspective, and the lack of availability of something that retains them here? Do you do that kind of analysis?
It does in the sense that we choose those as some of our targets to go recruit against. So say, for example, in the, you know, video gaming business, those are pretty central. There's some very specific places that you go if you want to talk to those guys. And to convince them to come here, and it's a chicken and egg problem for them to say, why would we move out of Seattle when we know what the workforce looks like here? why would we move out of Seattle when we know what the workforce looks like here? Convince us that there's enough people coming out of the program at the University of Utah or UBU or wherever it is, that we could come here and stand up a studio and get 100 of the best quality gamers like we can someplace else, so. But there's nothing wrong with that approach, though, that's.
But I think it would be, maybe what's helpful for us is if we look at, is it a recruitment or is it an opportunity for encouraging and incubating those startups here that might go on? And just what that role could look like, because I could see where we might be, have some resources to foster startups, maybe instead of a relocation push for a specific market. But I'm interested in the relationship of identifying what those gaps are, in particular at a state level, to see where that drain is of talent that's going out of state because they can't have, they can't access employment here, and how might we capture that in a variety of ways?
Sure. Now, you guys are on the workforce development side, that's part of what Ben's working on too, so maybe Val can address that as well.
All good stuff, just a minute or so. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to be here. We at GOED think that your future is very bright in economic development. We think you have so many things in place right now. You've got a great city, great transportation, you have an emerging nightlife that is really exciting, that you have so much available right now, and now with this new focus on economic development, we think that the things are going to really explode here, so we commend you for that. I'm just going to touch on a few things, because many of my talking points mirror Jeff's, but I think one thing that you need to, need to know about, that isn't typically talked about in economic development, is tourism. And a fact that may surprise you, our Mighty Five campaign that we use to promote the national parks, last year, one of our digital providers showed that 25% of all hotel rooms booked by individuals exposed to those ads got a hotel room in Salt Lake City. So one-fourth, fully one-fourth of everybody who saw those ads and booked a hotel booked one here. So we think all that economic development, all that money is going south, no, the people like to come up here to the capital city, and so you're benefiting in a significant way from that tourism, and we see that as an opportunity to grow. We think that, that, you know, there's an opportunity for you now to look at your zoning codes, decide what it is you want to do with those, to have them reflect your vision and your values. One of the things that I've heard from businesses, I heard from somebody Friday at our summit, somebody who was trying to start up a business here, renovate a building, and was complaining about how hard it is to do in Salt Lake City. You may want to look at the opportunity to figure out how you streamline that process and make it easier. An example, you may look to Reno. Reno recently made a real concerted effort to streamline its process, facilitate it, and have it available 24/7 for business people who want to start a new business there. It's just, it's an opportunity for you to change that perception from Salt Lake's a tough place to start a business to Salt Lake is an easy place to start a business. And I would encourage you to look at that, maybe like the state did a few years ago with all of its business regulations, take a look at it, see if there's redundancy, if there's things that need to be tweaked, and then try to tackle that. I think that may be a worthwhile thing. Like Jeff said, the big challenges right now, workforce, water, infrastructure, those are the challenges that businesses are facing, and they'll face here in Salt Lake City as well, so I won't dwell on that much. But we have, we have a number of tools in GOED that we need, that we would hope that you would encourage business owners to look at. Our Business Resource Centers, our, well, Avenue H, the Business Exchange, Healthcare Exchange, our Procurement Technical Assistance Centers that are for companies that want to try to get government contracts, they help them. And our International Trade and Diplomacy Office. We encourage you, you know, I really think you have a great asset here that maybe you haven't tapped into as well, and that's that university right there on the hill. And I say that because when I was at the Chamber in Utah Valley, Provo City really figured out a way to tap into BYU, and those, those business students, entrepreneurs, worked very closely with the city, and Provo has created an incredible entrepreneurial space and opportunity, and they spin out a lot of companies that end up leaving and going up to Lehigh, but you know what, there's a constant replacement, and it's because of the relationship they had with the university. And I think you ought to examine what you're doing up there, how you're interacting with them, because those students, they are a tremendous resource for your city. And I think if you can tap into that, you're going to be in great shape for a long time to come. We think, you know, your incubators here, as was discussed, you've got some great incubators and working with them, let's see, you know, I encourage you, we really like to see the idea of nodes, and those don't just happen, they take a lot of planning, they take incentives sometimes to get them just right the way you want them. But we think that's, those are really important, have those entertainment districts, shopping areas, accessible transportation, the whole diverse housing options, schools, all of that, it's a great way to build your city and to create a flavor and an environment in your city that is really pleasing and attractive. We have a plan that we'd just like to hand out, this is our new economic development plan, you can take a look at it. It really focuses, the governor's going to focus on four things coming up in the next while, grow and support Utah businesses. And we've spent a lot of time recruiting new businesses, and we'll continue to do that, but we really want to focus on growing and supporting our businesses here in the state and finding a way to help them prosper. We also want to engage with industry to build strategies that maintain our diverse economy. That's why we're doing so well in the state. We've got such a great diverse economy. And strengthen our supply chain, and then expand the tourism experience. I mean, you just heard, you're the beneficiaries of a lot of money because we're advertising our national parks. And the good news is, they're not just going to the national parks, they're coming north, and they're dropping money all along the way, like breadcrumbs, all the way up here to Salt Lake and into other parts of our state. And then the partnerships that Jeff mentioned, we, we really want to see business, education, government partner together to make some great strides in our workforce development. And the example that we've used that has really caught national attention is our Pathways Program, where we have high school students now that are available their senior year to take some classes, go to work for one of the aerospace industries as an intern, a paid internship, work with the ACTs or Salt Lake Community College, and graduate their senior year with a certificate to be immediately eligible for a job in one of those industries with benefits. And after one year, they're willing to pay for their tuition if they want to go on to college. And, I mean, just think about that, if your child came home and said, a senior in high school said, I'm going to go get an intern, paid internship with Boeing this year, and when I graduate, they may hire me with benefits, and then they will pay for my education if I want to get an education. Is there any parent out there that wouldn't say, hmm, nice deal, saving my pocketbook a little money while you're at it? But those are the type of things that we need to, that we're hoping to do, more of those types of partnerships where we can collaborate with, with education, with government, with business, to come up with some great things. So that's pretty much my presentation.
Derek.
Thanks to both of you for coming today. For Jeff, on your first slide, you mentioned that we could better utilize our revolving loan fund. Do you have any specific recommendations there?
In my experience, you know, the way that it was designed, it was really never intended to be a standalone loan instrument. It's something that you would include in a financing package that the funds in the city would go in that direction. One of the challenges with the fund is that as overall interest rates have dropped, the advantage that that fund used to have in terms of a lower cost mechanism for getting a loan, a lot of that has eroded, and I think there's some thinking that needs to be done about how do you make that more attractive to companies? Perhaps even a very low or even a zero-interest loan, make short-term, that's in the weeds a little bit, something like that, though, to make it more appealing to them. And then the other side of that too, is also to grow the total, the fund balance, you know, some, a lot of really good work was done to bring that back from the edge and brought it back to where it goes now. And if you have more money, more money available, that isn't just available for small business, but that could also be part of a financing package that a larger company would want to do. Say, for example, if somebody's purchasing some new ground or doing a new manufacturing project, if there could be a million dollars available from that fund to go into, again, last money in kind of an idea that helped the city add that as an extra incentive. And again, it's a loan, not a grant, you know, the city gets paid back on favorable terms, but I think there's some creative ways to use that that would be out there. So those are just a couple of ideas.
Thank you. I have two more questions. You also mentioned that we have some corporate relocation opportunities that maybe we're missing. Anything that you can speak to on that?
Well, I think having this new Economic Development Director in place will make a big difference in that regard, getting the city involved early in those projects, and again, Peter's done a great job on his own with that, but I think having someone with that as a focus that we can get engaged early, the mayor has repeated many times that she'd like to be engaged in that, and I know that there are members of the council that would do the same if we had companies that would like to come here and find out about what's going on in Salt Lake City. That's the kind of engagement that I'm talking about. It's one thing to fill out a questionnaire and RFP, it's another thing to have someone that answers the phone and says, we're here, I'm representing Salt Lake City, and I want to be here, so.
Yeah, I think you'll find a lot of support from council members. For instance, I was really involved in the relocation of Cotopaxi here to Salt Lake, and that resulted in two locations. I just learned they moved their distribution to 15th South and 7th West, which is great. So I'm really excited about that. In fact, Carlton mentioned that maybe we should look to local corporations that we could double down on, instead of putting all of our energy into relocation. I think Cotopaxi is one that we could look to as a fast-growing corporation. My final question for Val, you mentioned that we have a huge resource in the University of Utah. What do you see as potential low-hanging fruit in that partnership, and how might we go about, what are some strategies for further integrating the city with the university?
Well, I would, I would have your new Economic Development Director and people go up and meet, and if they're not already, they may already be, have a great relationship with your, the entrepreneurial program up there, the business school, the new LaSande Entrepreneurial Center there, they've just got so many great programs there. Make sure you're very well-connected, and that your person can knows these incubators and other places where these students will want to migrate to get their businesses going. I think, you know, there are a number of other programs out there, the 1 Million Cups Program is a possibility, you may already have that, I'm not sure, but it's a, it's a great program where entrepreneurs and interested entrepreneurs get together one day a week, and they invite one or two entrepreneurs to come and share their ideas of what it is their business is doing, and then all of the other entrepreneurs there give them suggestions, give them ideas as to how they can improve their business. And, you know, I know down in Provo, they get 60 or 70 people every week there to that, a lot of students are there, and it just kind of helps people get excited about their projects and help other new entrepreneurs grow. But I would just make sure your connections are there, that you know where, how you can integrate those students into the city, and give them opportunities to, to start businesses here, and let those grow, and then hopefully stay here after they've started to grow.
If I could add another idea, there's been an idea that's been around the city for quite a number of years, that's this idea of a life science corridor. If you think about, and if you look at the, if you analyze the businesses that have spun out of the University of Utah, a very large majority of them are related to life science in one way or another. Why not try to capture some of those, you know, to your point, Aaron, to say, come down the hill, and let's find a good spot for you down here where you could be part of that. And those, those companies like being in the same proximity, they like, it's kind of a Silicon Valley model, they like having that workforce, you get, if you get, you know, a room full of biochemists, which is kind of a dangerous thing, actually, but if you get those, they like, they all know each other, they like sharing ideas, they do that, and I think there's a, some merit in having a potential, you know, maybe a district in the city where you set that aside as a life science corridor. And we've done a lot of thinking about that, the Chamber's been involved in that, we actually have taken that a long ways, and we're ready to roll that back out again now too, so, but that's a, that's a great function.
So council members, before we continue the question onto the panel, let's hear from the mayor, and then we can start asking questions to everybody.
Can I just ask one question of Val before we do that? Well, you got, you got an excuse earlier, Aaron, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna invoke the air and privilege.
I will follow the rules.
The Mighty Five campaign is brilliant, and it annoys me a little bit because the parks are really crowded, so that's just personal perspective, I know that's a good thing. Can you tell me on that 25% that are, is that a beginning or end of a trip? Is that, I mean, are those people flying into the airport? Have you done that kind of analysis?
I don't know, Sarah, do you know if we have that data, whether it's beginning or end?
It's usually, um.
Sarah, can we?
Yeah.
Sarah Adelman is in our Marketing and Communications Department.
Hi, happy to be here. I can't speak definitively to that, but I know that when we do talk about Salt Lake City as being an integral part of tourism in the state, it's because the city is an excellent gateway to the state. You look at a lot of the international visitors that are coming into Utah, they are flying into Salt Lake City International Airport.
And so, this is a little bit of a follow-up, because I know a lot of that trip generation also comes out of Vegas. Is there a way to capture some of that, or should we try to capture some of that?
Yeah, I think what you're seeing too, is people fly into Vegas, do the Mighty Five, and they want to go up to Yellowstone. So they're coming up this way, spending the night here on the way to Yellowstone. So there's, that is a very popular route that some of our tourists take. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's almost no topic that hasn't been brought up either by you or by the presenters today, but I do want to add to some of this discussion around the role arts and culture can play as we build our economy here. And we brought on to our staff an individual who's been meeting with all of the different arts groups, and will continue to do that, to talk about how the city can partner with our arts opportunities. We have dozens and dozens of arts and culture opportunities right here in the city, but we haven't really capitalized on how to market our city as a destination for those experiences. And that's part of what we are working on, and the individual we brought in has both an arts background and a marketing background, and is working closely with the county as well as all of the individual entities here that are providing such great opportunities for us. So hopefully, that presentation to you will come sometime this summer as we finish kind of vetting through this potential opportunity for our business development arm of the new Economic Development Department. I can tell you that also, we are wrapping up our first round of interviews this week for that director position, we will do the second round next week, and then we will make offers. Hopefully, this will get pushed onto your agenda for you to vet out and determine if we've selected the right person, but we would love to see that on your agenda in May so that we can get this person in place quickly. We're also finding that the deputy director position that will be created through an MTFT that we've kept a hold on to, is somebody that we will find through this process, or internally, through an internal application. So we will probably present both of these individuals to you at the same time is what our hope is.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Questions for the panel? Aaron.
Can we go back to the life science corridor conversation? And something that was a conversation with Lane and DJ in the, in the autumn, early winter time, that has kind of trickled off, but that we've talked about as a body in council and RDA sessions, and I want to bring up here again, is this area of potential, north of the UTA properties, kind of where their garage is currently, west of the gateway and east of I-15, where as a city and an RDA, we own several properties, certainly not all, but that kind of proximity to the hub, to the university, to our transit system, and to the downtown core of culture that you started off with, Val, talking about that we're so proud of, is really so unique for the state, and the potential of that available, the mass of available property in that area is also really unique. So I don't, I would be disappointed if I didn't bring it up in this conversation, that I am excited about that potential. potential. I think as a body, we would be really enthusiastic if you, in either of your endeavors, find a company and perhaps for a headquarter area for an anchor type of tenant in that area. But where we could locate and create even an innovation-type district around life sciences that has perhaps some communal aspect that could be supported through a mechanism that the city could come up with, where they have communal dining or that there are areas and spaces where those businesses, large and small, come together to get their cup of coffee or to have a sandwich, and that the co-mingling happens because of the programming that the city has a role in creating that's built into the infrastructure of that kind of a development. I think that there are businesses around the world, and certainly in the United States, that are looking for this kind of a place that has what we have to offer and that has land that is proximal to all of these assets. So I would request that you keep your eyes open and think about who we can bring in there, what kind of a new district we can create, and that we are hungry for that type of an environment to be in our downtown area, and that area is really ripe for it. So if you have any ideas or thoughts on that, I'd love to hear about it now. But going forward, we can all work together.
Right, and a prime opportunity to work with the university.
Yes, hopefully so.
That remains my favorite site as well. I like that region. But there are other options, too, but that's the great one, because it's right there in the middle of the transit hub. That's a really powerful place.
And UTA would say they need help in funding their new garage so we can have a little bit more land. But we can start that conversation about what the land we already have available before that.
Thanks, James. Thank you both for being here. This, I think it's a very exciting time in the city because of the amount of attention that the council is giving to economic development, that the administration is giving to economic development. And it's something that, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's been a long time since we've talked about this in this type of forum. So thank you for being here. What I would like to say is that over the next couple of months, you know, as the chair moves the council agenda forward, because of the fact that economic development was one of the three council priorities this year, there is going to be, we're going to be spending a lot of time talking about this, about this issue. And it's such a broad issue. One of the requests that I'd like to make, Mr. Chair, of you two and also and everyone else who's presented today, is that you all stay involved during this process and during this discussion because the opportunity is such at this time that I think we can really tackle this issue and focus on bringing some really good business development to Salt Lake City. We have in Salt Lake City many things that other cities, you know, could never even dream of having, you know, from the urban life that we have to the free trade zone near the airport, which has been terribly underutilized, not just by Salt Lake City, but I think by the state as well. That's something, you know, that we would love to have your participation on and help there. The inland port idea is a phenomenal concept, something that geographically, you know, Salt Lake City was made for. And one of the things that we have, the other thing that we have that no other city of our size really has is the amount of space for light industrial, for clean manufacturing, and things like that. We, there is a lot of opportunity here. What we need is a vision and direction and policy. That's what the council's going to be working on with Mayor Biskupski's efforts with the economic development. You know, we're hoping that the new economic development director is going to be able to bring some of that as well. But you have, I mean, you have the full commitment of the council. You have the full commitment of the mayor when it comes to economic development. So my only request is that we don't put, you know, any barriers on what we're, I mean, I think now is the time to think big. And if it means, you know, doing something that we've never done before, it's the time to do it, because the commitment, I think, is there from the council and the administration, from the business community. And so, at this point, you know, we'd just like to make sure that you guys are involved in the process moving forward. And that goes for the county. That goes for all of our other presenters today as well. So thank you.
And I'll add one thing to that based on something else you had brought up, and that is, as you're creating policy around how we are designing our business nodes, I think it would be important to understand the inventory of space for businesses that we currently have and what is needed, because it's stage one and stage two of the incubators. Both those levels, from what I understand, need places to land that they cannot find here. And part of that is because some of the way our buildings have been structured. But part of it is we're not necessarily creating new space that really works for stage one and stage two.
And just to follow up with what the mayor said, another thing is that it's a problem in Salt Lake City. We do have space, but we just don't know about it. For example, 10 of the businesses that Jeff listed, two of them are with me. And that's because you have to have ambition and go out there and get it. I just think that the city has looked past these things, and we need to be more involved in knowing what do we have available in Salt Lake City.
Yes.
And Val, you mentioned the, and I wouldn't even say it's a perception, that Salt Lake City is difficult to do business with. I think that, you know, we've heard, we've all heard a lot of, you know, realities about that difficulty. If you, if there are specific things that you hear consistently that we ought to be looking at and addressing, please let us know. Because, you know, I know that there's an audit that's taking place right now from, you know, the building services. And so that's moving forward again, you know, just like it's the time for economic development, if there's a time to fix a problem that you hear of consistently, now's the time to do that. So.
We hope to have a great, open channel of communication with your new person. In fact, I've told the mayor, right after that person notifies their spouse of the job, we hope the next call's to our office. So we really are looking forward to it.
We'll put you and Jeff on speaker.
Okay.
There are two other entities out there that really would be helpful with some of the things that you are focused on, and that is International Trade Center and then also Utah Technology Center, UT. Those are council, those are really key partners in the work that we'll be doing as a city that is of great interest to you, from what I can tell. And I think that will be also some partners that we'll need to reach out to and have some discussion with.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Mayor. I was really happy to hear you talk about arts and culture, because I completely agree that arts can really drive a significant portion of economic development in the city. And we are well-positioned to move forward on that. We have some amazing organizations that are doing awesome work. I've heard from a number of these organizations that your appointment has been reaching out to them, and I think that that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Looking at these strategic objectives in the GOED pamphlet, looking at film production, I think that Salt Lake City ought to be, we really need to take the charge on this, because we have the Salt Lake Film Society, which focuses on contemporary art and the film production, and, I'm sorry, independent film. And I think, you know, just focusing with them and trying to find a partnership there. And then, of course, our huge endowment when it comes to Sundance. We have all the makings. We just need to put the energy behind it. And I think that we can really be a leader for this strategic objective in particular. And so, you know, I hope that with this in mind, knowing that it's your objective and ours as well, that maybe we can find some common ground and work really well together on that.
And there is some discussion right now with Sundance themselves on partnering on something in Salt Lake City. And then there's always the Utah Film Center. So those are all very strong partners in film where we need to better understand how to utilize. And that will be part of the work that Leah will be doing.
Yeah, I know that through the campaign, you were well-connected with a lot of folks who you can call on now and really rally the troops. And so I think this is, we're perfectly primed for this.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions? All right, Allison, follow up. How are we gonna, how are we gonna follow up with these lovely people that we've met with today?
Her poor hand.
Council, yeah, please feel free to leave. We've got some follow-up discussion now. We so appreciate everyone that's been here today, participating and helping us formulate a great economic development strategic plan. So Allison, lead us forward. Follow up with what we've got. Council members, I think it would be really wise for us also, this has been a great, a great fact-finding night at a high level. I think it's an opportunity for us to dive down into neighborhoods and communities and figure that out as well and doing the same type of thing on the west side, on the east side, downtown Salt Lake City, and invite stakeholders for each category that we're looking at in moving forward. Council members, would you be agreeable to that, moving forward with fact-finding nights in different districts? Okay, great. And then the follow-up. Allison, lead us in the conversation. How are we, can we follow up with this, these groups that have been here and helping them come to the fact-finding nights in communities as well?
Well, we will certainly continue our contact with them, Mr. Chair.
Good.
And we'll alert them for, of all the dates and locations that the chair decides in concert with his colleagues. Perhaps you're interested in a different question or a different response?
No, I guess some of the questions I have is, I mean, we look at 21st and 21st. That might be a great opportunity for us to have a fact-finding night there, as we look at defining that neighborhood and the node and reaching out to communities and businesses in the area, as well as on the west side with the west side master plan, the northwest quadrant, businesses that are looking to grow and opportunities. So I'm open to council member suggestions for anything when it comes to this, because this is so important, not only for downtown Salt Lake City, but across the entire city. Stan?
Mr. Chair, I do appreciate the value in going out into the neighborhoods, because the last thing I'd want to run into is a gap in knowledge with, Business Nose is a really good example, of immediate neighbors who might see what we're doing as a radical impact to their residential property. So I think it's really important to balance those conversations and give them an opportunity to express their concerns, because I think a lot of that can be incorporated in our direction and in our policy. The other thing that was interesting to me that I heard a couple of times today, and in particular from the county, is this need to look at a broad spectrum of employment. And I think so often, in my case, it feels like we're always looking for that high-paying job. But when Carlton talked about recruiting industry that had, composite industry that might have a high-paying engineering or management component, but also could have a entry-level production component, I thought that was a really sort of, for me, it was a little different way of looking at how we might develop policies around the types of industry we might recruit or what we're looking for in job creation. Because I can see that in a lot of areas in our community. It would be a responsible thing to look at that entry-level position as well as that high-paying, skilled, educated position. So I would love to figure out a way to capture some of that information, perhaps from the people who are out there in the job market or who are actually trying to find that, or who are working multiple jobs because they can't put together the one sort of entry position with a future. I don't quite know how to capture that, Allison, but maybe there's a way we could talk about with some of our experts of how we might get a feel for what that looks like.
I wonder, too, if the universities in the city would have, would have people who could speak to that because of their broad, their involvement with a broad number of recent graduates and other young people.
I have a piece on that. I think it was actually in relation to the Elevate Buildings and Project Skyline endeavor that the city's going through. But I toured some of the larger manufacturing and warehouse facilities in District 1 and 2 with Steve Price. And we went into the Fans facility that does sports wear distribution and into a heavy-duty truck parts distributor facility. We went in a whole bunch of places. And what I was impressed with, which is speaking to the part Kristen talked about around where we have local businesses and box stores losing out to online shopping, well, we happen to be a hub for distribution for online shopping. And so, sort of unique to, I think maybe actually quite unique to our city compared to other cities in the region, we can capitalize on that market in that unique way that they are, they're paying, they are paying property tax here. Well, we might not be collecting the sales tax. We want to just yet, but there is a different approach to that. And that those facilities, like Fans, create these entry-level positions with graduating opportunities into different skills, and there's a lot of cross-training that happens in these facilities. So maybe someone with that higher level, there was a guy, whose name I can get to you later, that Mr. Price recommended, who looks at that broad scale of warehouse occupants and who to strategize around recruiting into the city that needs to be quite proximal to our interchange. So that could be a different approach.
And Natalie Gockner also sent me a list of some names to consider along those lines for warehousing in particular.
Great, Allison. You feel good? I feel good. This has been a great fact-finding evening. I've really appreciated it, especially seeing the different, you know, I addressed it briefly about talking about streams and turning into a river. And this is a great opportunity for us to make those connections and actually have some solid ground to work with on economic development.
I want to thank our chair and vice chair for setting this up. This was really informative. Thanks to the staff for coordinating it, and really to our speakers.
Yeah, our staff is amazing. They're the ones that really coordinated this entire thing from start to finish.
Thanks.
All right. We are done with item number seven. We're on to announcements.
Okay, only two announcements. One is that council member Kitchen had spoken with someone from the Ogden City Council, and I think that council member Penfold had two previously about the idea of creating kind of a partnership with them, information, sharing opportunities where the Salt Lake City Council would go to Ogden and see some of their accomplishments and discuss some policy issues with them. And then the Ogden City Council would do the same here. We had done that a few times with the Provo City Council in the past. So the difficulty always is scheduling, and I know you all have full-time jobs. But is this something that you would like us to pursue for those of you who are available?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Can I speak to that really quickly? So this conversation that I had with Marsha White from Ogden City Council happened in St. George a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, I think we have a lot to learn from them, especially now that we're kind of in this influx of it with RDA and economic development. And I think it'd be great for us to see firsthand some of the things that Ogden is doing. They've got a great corporate recruitment program. They started their own twilight. I think maybe it might be good to schedule it on a night where we might have an opportunity to experience their evening twilight this summer. So if anybody's interested in that as well, we can consider those dates.
And you said to tie it to twilight?
Just use that as an opportunity to experience their twilight and compare it internally.
Mm-hmm. That's a great idea. So we get a show of thumbs up. Who's interested in doing that? Look at that. We're gonna have a quorum.
Okay. And then the second, and so we'll follow up with, on that. Then the work session start times. We, I think, had asked you if it was okay to start during, start at 1:00 during the budget, but then we forgot whether we asked you or not. So is it acceptable to you to start your briefing sessions at? to you to start your briefing sessions at 1:00 p.m. during the budget season?
Just during the budget season.
Okay.
Great.
And then, we need you to decide on next Tuesday. You got through CDBG pretty quickly tonight. The 26th is the night that you're actually scheduled to adopt. We have reserved some time on your agenda for next week to discuss CDBG. So, with that being the case, you may want to start at 1:00, or if you think you're going to be quick again, you could start at 2:00.
Council members, I say 1:00 o'clock, just so that we're not cutting ourselves short. Give ourselves some options. Okay?
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right. For those here and following online, that is our work session for today. So, we will adjourn until 7:00 o'clock across the hall. And dinner is, is it at the liaison staple or is it at the mayor's?
Break room.
Mayor's break room.
I'm going to spend higher than here.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Actually, we may.
Yeah, thank you.